Working on minutes delivered versus the minutes in the schedule, the same thing across the board. Incorporate some goal setting, very specific to the schools around diagnostic testing. Teachers will teach tier one curriculum with intervention support during their Panther periods, which we already really counted, but just aligning it and monitoring that piece. Tier two and tier three rosters and progress data biweekly. Walkthrough look for us with timely feedback posted to staff weekly.
And so as you, as you all see, one of the things that we, you know, certainly have heard our governance team, and we're looking at the specific data, we're addressing the correlation between how our students are performing on milestone and how the grades are, and so that where we can make sure that we're addressing those particular aspects. But we're using multiple measures of data because not only are we looking at this with cross referencing and also looking at evaluation, and then looking at how are we evaluated across the board and whether or not those evaluations reflective of how our students are performing as it relates to the students as well. So there's, and then we also correlating the attendance data and then looking, going back and say, how are the students performing? Were these particular students who were absent X number of days, how are they performing as relates to the students who were actually present? As well as looking at the disciplinary piece and then saying, okay, how are these students that are performing at certain levels? Do we see there where there's instances where the discipline may be impacting? So it's more than just looking at the assessment data piece to determine what root causes and what we need to focus across the board for us as a system.
And so we have a high pass rate, nearly, almost all the children passing, but we're getting about fifty percent of them starting at developing.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Which ought to be our pass rate right there, so.
Okay. Audit and progress data, minutes audit, we're going to look at weekly audits with minutes that deliver versus the minutes in the schedule. So looking at what's on the schedule and then are people really delivering instruction during that time? The biweekly review of the tier two, tier three rosters, the walkthroughs with tallies, weekly posting of the walkthroughs, look for what the look for is are, share those in all of our collaboratives, reteach plans, standards-based reteach plans, logged in the PLC notes with dates and evidence. Next, we have fifth grade ELA trend data, starting in twenty one, twenty two. Fifty percent of our kids were at beginning learner, forty-two percent at the end of this school year, at beginning learner level, developing thirty-four percent in twenty one, twenty two, and then twenty four, twenty five, thirty-eight percent, proficient learners fifteen percent in twenty one, twenty two, eighteen percent at the end of this particular school year, and one percent distinguished twenty one, twenty two, two percent distinguished learners at beginning of, at the end of this past school year. And some of the things that we have already drilled down to is are the scores, are we getting stagnant in a place, standing in a place so that the data is not going up or down, just doing the same old thing? So really touching on what we do in this particular grade to address what we see because we saw a drastic drop and then we kind of like at a stalemate.
Can we also get the reading?
We'll do it for everybody.
Okay.
We'll do it for all the grades. That's, that, we can do that. Fifth grade math data, twenty one, twenty two, seventy-three percent of the kids were at beginning learner level. At the end of this past school year, forty percent in twenty one, twenty two, twenty-three percent were developing. Now we're up to forty-two percent, twenty one, twenty two, three percent of the kids were proficient, we're up to seventeen percent. And we had no kids that were distinguished in twenty one, twenty two, and we're up to one percent.
Are y'all still doing, I know at one point you were doing, teachers were expected to teach foundational skills during their regular classroom. Is that still happening? Okay, so when, within that limited time they have, they have to teach foundational skills, on-grade level skills, and remediate on-grade level skills?
So your remediation, your foundational are going to be pretty much the same? They should remediate, remediate in what you're teaching on grade level?
Right.
So the way the foundational skills are in math, as you can see, the foundational skills are connected to the grade level skills. So it's not like we just go back and say, oh, you're going to work on audit even because you're missing that. It's whatever that grade level skill is, we work on the foundational skills that are tied to that particular skill.
Is that during a separate time or is that during that teacher's?
It's during the teacher's time. It's built into their list, the way they're building into their lessons.
Okay, that's a lot on the teacher. They don't have a separate remediation period?
They do, they do, they do.
They can teach that somebody else is delivering foundational skills? And the teachers focus on on-grade level remediation and teaching the on-grade level? So they just focus on, and somebody else goes back and pick up foundational skills? Y'all don't do that?
No, we don't, no, not exactly like that. Most of our math classes have, all of our, all of our math classes have more than enough time. Like our middle school math, we just talked about this today, our middle school math class has eighty minutes. Most people have fifty to sixty minutes. So within that eighty minutes, there's time for remediation or, and there's time for the regular math time. In the other grades, you have ninety, at least ninety minutes, K five, to teach math, and the lessons are designed for fifty minutes. So you have the time built in as well. It really is going to go back to what you're using, how you're using the time. And if it's, I want to say, the way the lessons are laid out, it's not like I have to plan a totally separate lesson. So if I'm teaching division, I don't know if this makes sense, if I'm teaching division, but the, but the child has, is still working on multiplication, I'm not going to stop everything I'm doing and going back to multiplication. I'm working on only the things that are going to get me to that grade level standard. So I'm, I think it would probably be good just to do a demonstration of how the lessons are laid out so that you can see how it's laid out for teachers.
And I know ninety minutes is, is a good ample time because it's middle school, we always had ninety minutes. So we never had enough time.
Right.
To teach the on-grade level content. So I, I know teachers probably.
Somebody's going to be understanding how the, how the lessons are laid out and how the resources. Trying to make sure you have the right resource so you can lay it out, so it's not like more work on teachers to try to find. They don't have to try to figure out what, how to fill in the gaps. Okay? And all of their planning really is done as a team, so that's another plus for that. Fifth grade science data, fifty-five percent twenty-three, twenty-four, fifty-five percent twenty-four, twenty-five, and beginning learner, developing learner, twenty-two percent. This past year, twenty-four percent, proficient learner nineteen percent, this past year eighteen percent, twenty-three, twenty-four, distinguished learner was four percent, this past year three percent. In efforts to really kind of make some things happen here, for the past couple of years, they have been using pretty much the units or whatever. So we have decided they have a core in fifth grade, a core that they will use along with the units so that, to support the work that they're doing in science. And definitely providing some hands-on, making sure that they have materials to do the actual science, to do the science and not just the book and notes.
Now, we asked last time, I know I did, I asked about, we have STAR and we have, what's that other one, for assessment? But we don't have anything for science to know where the kids are at any point in time, so, and y'all never brought us.
Okay, so we do, we did pre- impose for science, but with the core, we will have a beginning of the year test, they will have a mid-year test, and they will have an end of the year test. I talked to the representative, that was one of the reasons to go to a core, so that teachers don't have to develop an assessment and try to decide what percentage of what goes on the test, but to already have one made that's similar to what they already do.
Y'all use the thing that the state has developed already?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. What's it called? Not suitcase, what's the, Inspire?
Inspire, yes.
Y'all use Inspire?
Yes, ma'am. Pass fail rate in fifth grade, subjects, we really focused on reading and math. Ninety-eight percent passing in twenty-three, twenty-four, ninety-seven percent passing in twenty-four, twenty-five. Math, eighty-seven percent passing in twenty-three, twenty-four, eighty-five percent twenty-four, twenty-five. And again, really going to spend this time, our focus this year is making sure that the minutes they have to deliver instruction, that that instruction is really happening, making sure that our teachers are really having an opportunity to work on tier one instruction during that time when kids are with them, whether it's remediation, whatever, making sure they might get the best side of instructional time and then still having those walkthroughs to get timely feedback on what we see when we're in the classroom.
Sixth grade, we got sixth grade ELA and we're going to look at sixth grade ELA trend. Again, you see fifty-nine percent, we look at twenty-one, twenty-two school year going to fifty-three percent this school year. And we go over to the developing, we're looking at thirty-one percent in the gold on the far right. And we're looking in proficient at fourteen percent and distinguished at two percent. Again, a lot of the same things we're going to bring back to you all, the pass fail to read on grade level, those that are not read on grade level. We see some of the same things and we're moving closer to middle school. And so we're looking at the master schedule and making sure that we're maximizing that time and want to build in a period for just remediation for middle school age kids so that they can have that time to really remediate on those core area they need support in. And I think that's going to yield some great result in bringing that beginning learner down for this upcoming school year. With math again, you know, the assessment change, and we see that, we see a great, great, great change right there. We're beginning learners going to forty percent, and we see our developing learners, our kids are moving towards proficiency. So we, we are interested to see how those kids would perform in seventh grade next year and see how those kids move, especially with that big increase in developing learners and hoping that they'll move more towards proficiency in the middle school because they have, they have more time with remediation during their Panther block where they can get their, get their remedial skills and all those foundational things covered with their RTI tier two, tier three intervention. Same thing here, it did not calculate the reading, but we can see overall that we got to make some adjustments with the pass fail. We're going to bring to you, at the end of this school year, looking into next school year, Mr. Knight already gave us directives to bring you A, B, C, F ratio so that we can see where are they passing, but what are they passing with? And put that in correlation with the actual EOG milestones, EOG and EOC. We're going to pay very close attention to the time in class. Same thing, looking at tier two, tier three, looking for look fours in the classroom and really giving our teachers what they need to help support, make sure it's standard-based classroom. Seventh grade going to Something County Middle School, and we're looking here at our beginning learners increased. But we, we're looking to put a lot of great things in place. We talked today about master's schedule again. This is, I hate to say it like this, but it's dead data, we're just going to look at it and make determination for going into next year. We have, looking at our development learner, we dropped to twenty-six percent. Looking at the proficient, we got fourteen percent and distinguished at one percent. But we got a lot of leeway we're going to make with looking at the instruction, looking at the master's schedule, and make sure all of our kids, these kids will be eighth graders, looking at the eighth graders and seventh graders and giving them remedial, remedial courses and offering it to a vast majority of our kids. Me and Ms. Thomas looked today at our EIP, REP. So we're going to offer all of our kids, try our best to offer as many as we can, all of our kids, REP, IEP support so that they can get the foundational skills, because we see that there's an issue with foundational skills in the areas of reading. Math, we see, we're there, we saw a great change from twenty twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-four, twenty-five, going from fifty-seven percent beginning learners to forty-six. And we're going to take this year to look at all the things we already said about reading and hoping with that Panther block, Panther period, giving them what they need through our tier two, tier three intervention and making sure they get the support they need. So the next conversation we'll be having, looking at data, we'll be bringing you a decreased number of beginning learners with an increased number of developing, but definitely looking to increase the proficient learners and distinguished learners. Yeah, looking at eighth grade, got the same, same story, just different kids. We're looking at forty-one percent in twenty-one, twenty-two to forty-three percent, that's a two-point increase. But we're looking at what we're going to put in place with the master's schedule and all those interventions to get these, get these numbers down. And it's, it's the same story, we're just going to put these things in place and we're going to monitor it to make sure that we get the kids what they need. I truly think that we got to get them, the remedial period built in so that they can have that time to stay, so they can focus on the tier one content in the regular class period. Math, again, we see the math is trending down, which is good, especially after twenty-two, twenty-three. We go down to forty-two percent in beginning learners. We, we see a slight increase in developing, increase in proficient. We're just working again to do that same plan, that plan I think will address all of our inconsistencies here, but we're going to make it move in the right direction. Science in eighth grade, so a decrease, I'm sorry.
For the seventh grade and eighth grade ELA in math, we didn't get a pass fail rate?
I didn't, I didn't have it from the school to be able to produce it. I make sure it's on the same report where we bring you the pass and the reading on grade level and all grade level. I make sure all that, I'm taking notes so I can make sure you get it on the next time we meet.
Okay.
We will make sure you have it.
So any, any questions y'all have, Ms. Bivens, or any other board member? Specific things that we're not addressing in our presentation, y'all just making, no, let us know? And then we'll make sure we'll get that particular data piece.
I didn't notice we had a pass rate.
For the rest of them, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I make sure you get on it when we get you there.
Not seventh and eighth grade.
Yes, ma'am, we'll get it when you get the read on grade level, all grade level.
And as you all are analyzing, and I'm quite sure you all done it, just hadn't brought it to us, in your analysis, do you know what's working and what's not working? And what's your next step? Specifically, what's working? Do you have y'all analyzed what's working and what's not working?
We're in the middle of the, we're really working on the analysis now. Really to determine what's working and what's not. We really do that trend data, we looked at reading statuses to see within that developing, within those developing numbers, even though our goal is proficient, within that developing, many of those kids are at grade level. So really trying to figure out what do they need so that they can become proficient? So really just really looking at what the domain say, and then we're moving to what do we have that's already working and what's not working? And what are we doing fidelity so that we can make sure that it's not working?
Because we're, we're starting off school and if we know this is, this has worked, we want to keep this. This is not working, we don't want to keep doing this, we're going to keep getting, being stagnant.
Yes, ma'am, and so.
We got to identify.
Yes, ma'am. And so with that, Ms. Hamilton, these first, the first month, we've been working on the cultural piece and building the relationships, establishing the standard operating procedures, pretty much, you know, getting everything organized. And so we have our scheduled collaboratives where we have our principals, academic coaches, APs, for us to be able to go to the next step with this particular data piece. To bring them in is what's working, what has, what was trending, what's worked, what did not work? And then, of course, as we was mentioning, getting our schedules together to make sure that we're able to offer those particular things and instructional times, so then when we identify those things, we're ready to be able to move ourselves forward and take certain things off.
When's the next cycle where they determine? I know they were on a three-year cycle, when's the next one where they determine who's on the list and who's not? Do y'all know, is it?
I don't know that.
This year or next year?
I'll have to double check.
Three year, those schools that were on the list had three, three years, right?
Yeah, and I think it started last year, so I think we're going on to, next year will be the final cycle of that, but I'll get that date, let you know, Ms. Hamilton.
Mr. Sanders, who, who keep track of all this? I mean, what's working and what's not working?
Instructionally?
Yes.
For curriculum instruction?
Yes, sir.
The, the social superintendent role in our curriculum role?
Mr. Sanders, you said something a while ago, and you know I'm new, so I'm trying to figure out some of this stuff. Dead data, what exactly is that? You said dead data, what exactly is that?
Lagging data.
Lagging data.
The data that's already taking place. We can't go back and fix that particular piece, but we can take that to inform what our next steps and what we need to do moving forward.
That's kind of why we look at trend data at this time of the year, to see what trends we see, like what's happened, what's been happening, happening over the years, what's working, what's not working over the years, trend data right now because this year lagging data. We can't go back and redo this, but we can make improvements to what we do so that we can get improvements in our, going forward.
And give you an estimate, Hamilton, to try and reflect in doing a curriculum audit, and we got it, we got to audit and try.
That was my next, must read my mind.
Oh, yeah. I was just thinking about what I've been reading, we got a curriculum audit and we're trying to figure out the things that we got that are working and make sure we keep those things abreast. And we're going, you know, it's some things that we're going to see here that, you know, we're actually having to look at to make sure we're purchasing the right equipment to get the kids what they need.
That was my next question, we bought so much, and I know it back, y'all supposed to have done an audit.
We done the audit.
To see.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I was going to ask too.
Yes, ma'am. So we, 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 we've come, we've, have the audit, it's now taking that particular information and cross-referencing with the performance and what's happening with the teachers to be able to address those particular pieces.
With all the programs, I remember one, it might have been a couple of months ago, all the programs that we purchased, I asked, are those programs keeping up the ones that are proficient, distinguished? And are we correlating all that with all the data that we have?
Yes.
To be able to push all that back out?
Yes, sir.
To what we have, because we got a lot of programs that we're using.
Yes, sir.
And are we going through each one of those programs to see what's, which is not working?
Yes, sir.
To be able to identify which child is proficient, developing?
Yes, sir.
And put all that data together?
Yes, sir.
And be able to move forward with it?
Yes, sir.
And who monitors the usage of those programs? And collects the data to determine if it's working? It's like, if you taking ten different medications, you don't know which one's working because you're taking ten different ones, so which one's working?
The way the structure, Mr. Knight, we kind of mentioned already, is that our collaborative start needs to be. So in the collaboration, we meet with principals, then APs, academic coaches, so everybody brings a layer of that data that they share at their school. So they collect the data, but we really oversee the data and give them what are the next steps with the data as well. As well as knowing what programs are going to what kids, like what kids are getting with programs. So really, all of our leaders, TNL leaders, and all of our admin in the school with the academic coaches monitor that.
So with me being brand new, I'm just, just following what Ms. Thomas said, I'm just, with Ms. Knight, he gave me some directives to go through and look at everything. And so I'd be disaggregating all that and really lining out who's responsible for what so that we can monitor this and give you a direct answer to who's monitoring what and how often we're doing it and what is it yielding? And Ms. Knight had me, he tasked me with that.
Right, what does that monitoring look like?
Yes, ma'am, I've been tasked with that, so we're working on that right now to tell who's doing what, how often are we doing it, and is it making, is it gaining any results? So I'm following his lead on that piece.
I would say even from our, our previous walkthrough data, everything that we share, a lot of things we have in place. So for us, it's really moving from compliance, is it happening? Or isn't it happening at a high quality? Like, yes, they are having collaborative planning, is it happening, happening at a high quality? Yes, we see the standards, but is it happening? And we see the standards existing in the classroom learning targets. But are these things happening at a high level for all of our students? So really changing from compliance to really making sure we get down to what's really needs to happen.
Same thing as we move to, and the reason why you got two years instead of four years here is because that, as far as I can go back in the particular S L Ds, it only gave me two years for science and social. I think it was the same thing we saw in the, at the elementary, intermediate school. So this, this trend that we have here, which is giving, giving us what is giving us, and we're looking and we're thinking after we've done all the analysis and the dissecting, and we bring back the different pieces, that we should see why and what we could do to move these numbers forward.
Going back to the periodic assessment, what are y'all using? What's the assessment you're going to be using to periodically assess like you do STAR? What are y'all using?
In grades, I think it's seven through twelve, we pro, progress learning. And the other one would be the kind of, whatever the company, the parent company for the core program.
So y'all be bringing up some progress learning data?
Yes, ma'am.
In social studies and science?
I'm sorry, Ms.
I'm sorry, I just, you asked a question, what we'd like to see. I mean, I'm, it's, it's interesting because I like to follow a kid or a class. So the sixth grade class in math in twenty twenty-one had fifty-four percent in beginning learner. The seventh grade class.
You followed the cohort?
So that's, that's kind of where I'm headed with this, so the next year there were forty-three, excuse me, forty-six.
I had this.
In the beginning.
I had this conversation today, me, when I was in my office, someone was saying, oh, we following the cohort data.
Yeah, so I'm trying to get.
I get that for you.
The kids in this class every year getting better.
Right, yes.
That's kind of what I'm, I mean, it's hard to follow in this format.
Yes.
Could we get a better cohort format?
We'll do a cohort, yes, sir.
I mean, that would, I mean.
Following cohort from year to year.
Right, if you had fifty-four here and you got forty-six here, and you got fifty-one here.
You consider it down, we'll make sure you have it next.
That's, that's the cohort and we're not, we're, that trend needs, in that cohort.
Right.
The cohort needs to go down.
Apples are apples and oranges are oranges. Following cohorts of kids and whether or not those cohorts of kids are moving from year to year.
That's correct.
Instead of the different cohorts, measuring one cohort versus another.
That's correct. I mean, that, that's kind of, because what good does it do if the kid is, if we don't take a group of young children and move them correctly through and the cohort trend is going in the right direction?
Got you. Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Right.
We'll have it, we'll have it ready for you.
Thank you.
If you look at the high school and you go to training for the high school, you got the twenty twenty-three, the twenty-four and twenty-five, we're looking at twenty-five is the current, green is the current year. Look at green, we have here in the area of biology, we have here sixty-one percent at level one. You have the developing there at twenty-five percent current year, but this past, most recent year, twelve percent proficient, one percent distinguished. We got American Lit, we're going to put the same data for you, Ms. Bivens, for on-grade level.
The reading status.
Reading status for all our kids, we'll put that for you. We have American Lit here, if, you know, fifty-one percent at develop, at beginning. We got thirty-four percent at developing, fourteen at efficient, zero distinguished. And you have your algebra one, which is forty-nine percent at level one, and thirty-one percent level two, which is developing, level three would be fifteen, the expected level, and then you have four percent at distinguished. And this is the algebra one data from the high school. What we get, the reason why I went through these all together, we had a conversation today about, we, we're meeting with, we're meeting and having, look at the master's schedule tomorrow. We're going to look at this schedule tomorrow to ensure that we incorporate remediation in the schedule and to make sure we get that remediation piece for all the students and get that lined out with the counseling staff and everybody at the high school. And also looking at the core curriculum pieces to see what they need.
Say a child that's in algebra and you're looking at the remediation piece, they're not going to be in algebra again. So you know what I'm saying? They, that's, as you say, they dead, they gone, that's another group got to take algebra. So what specifically are you all going to be looking at?
Well, looking at the kids that are coming to algebra, which is ninth grade, we talked about it today, because they're on a four by four block, we can offer remedial math first semester and then offer them to go into the actual testing area second semester, giving them a full ninety days of remediation to give them what they need, the prerequisites skills they need to be successful. And then they go and take the actual assessment the second semester.
So also, it also, I'm sorry to cut you off.
You did.
But also to help, if we know kids were struggling leaving the eighth grade and then they enter ninth grade and taking your alpha math and then go into algebraic concepts, then we want to try to provide them with some math year-round so that we feel like that would give them a better chance.
Also, going back to your point, is that they're leaving and the forty-nine percent with level one, that forty-nine percent need to be going into geometry remediation first.
Yes.
Because we already know they're going out needing support. So we're, we're going to look at that tomorrow with the counselor, and it's nothing but a jigsaw and we're, the team is ready to take it on, they already know they're coming. And I actually got clearance today from Mr. Knight to go ahead and take, make that meeting happen tomorrow to make sure we focus on the high school with it being a special situation with the four by four block. And they have time, and they actually have a Panther period already built into their master's schedule. So want to see exactly what's going on during that Panther period. Is it a period where we're actually doing remediation on these skills? Is it school-wide literacy, is it school-wide math? We want to just give them what they need. And we'll do a focus and make sure we monitor that focus.
Because if, it could be that instead of the child. Because if, it could be that instead of the child having to take a whole semester of remedial and then maybe I can take it during Panther period. That's my remediation and I'm not.
Right. So we we we'll look at, we'll look at on it, but we're gonna base it all on their eighth grade math scores. If they're severe, they probably need a whole semester. If they were bubba kids, they probably need Panther period. Right. And that's how deep we gonna look at it.
Yeah, maybe those beginning, well, that's a lot of them right there.
Yes, ma'am.
That's a bit of it.
U S history, did I read it? Um, and here again, the plan of action, um, this is high school review, uh, the core curriculum for nine through twelve, have some conversation, do some survey, get some perception data. Um, and look at some other things, the main thing is is going to take place tomorrow is review master schedule to ensure, ensure that the mass, um, we're maximizing instructional type of support. So that meeting will take place tomorrow so that you can know this is very important. We are already scheduled to make this happen. Any question for instruction?
Go back to U S history right quick?
Yes, sir.
Um, that's a very tall green number in beginning learner, do we know why?
We had this conversation today.
Having that increase by twenty percent from year to year?
Well, we requested today, uh, we talked about this today, um, and, um, we we requesting to see the teacher that are teaching these classes. I want to see their certification and just checking out all those things and making sure that we're putting the best, going back, I think Mr. Kier said it. We're putting all the students with the best person that can provide this instruction for the students and making sure that we got the best scenario and make sure they got the resource that they need and they're utilizing the resource that we are buying. And also make sure their collaborative planning, which I've been in a steady group or two, is is going good, but making sure it's identifying specific needs. I think once we get that piece nailed down, we're gonna see a drop with that. And again, I will, um, have that conversation tomorrow. We're gonna have those very intent, intense, hard conversations and we got to see something happen because again, that's a, that's a tall tree to cut down right there, but we're gonna do our best to touch on what we can to get it addressed.
And really think to scheduling, go ahead and hit scheduling tomorrow because scheduling could have definitely impacted when students have U S history, how many students were in the class. So it's not just about the scheduling, it's about how many kids might have been in that class during that time and who was providing the instruction during that time. Um, and what resources they actually had to provide the instruction.
Do the teachers have everything they need?
We got C A I Wednesday, we're surveying and we're gonna, we're gonna check on, we got, we have our audit that we're looking at, but also asking, because that's one thing, Ms. Knight, make sure you're clear that we don't want anybody to say you don't have what you need. We get you what you need to be successful with the students. So we're gonna ask those questions of the principal to go back and ask the teachers so that we can assess and make sure, because this this is unacceptable and we want to make sure that we support the students and give the teachers what they need to be successful with the students. And so the high school is a different, is a different layer of, we we, we gotta make sure we support them how they need support, but the number one step is looking at that master schedule. Because it's all about scheduling at a high school. A big piece of what the question, Ms. Hamon, the, and things that they requested, they they have what they requested, but sometimes we have to make sure they have what other things to make sure that we're addressing these particular areas. And that's what we're gonna do.
And and I, and I guess I'm just a firm believer, if they will utilize the state's curriculum that inspire, it has everything they need.
Broken down.
To be teaching what what's expected because they say they wrote the, they helped, wrote the assessment, so we really ought to be following, following that.
By another program?
It's not, it's a free online, they give the teachers everything, lesson plans.
Curriculum, everything they need.
Everything. Resources from the state, the state developed.
We got you. All right.
Any other question for us?
Any other questions? And so here again, the information that we were sharing was tied directly back to, um, our board goals and our governance team, information from our strategic planning. Um, other areas that we've identified as the governance team of every, that the other data that we would like to have, we would definitely have that information to be able to share with our governance team moving forward, um, because it is very, very, um, good information to make sure that we're on top of and moving, moving the needle for our students across the board. All right, so, uh, my next goal area is, um, goal area two, um, high quality workforce.
Before we get there, Ms. Knight, I did not see anything pertaining to our, our goal we set for G Mass and how, whether or not we were meeting that goal of ten percent.
We'll have that particular percentage data and so where we'll identify third grade, some reading on E L A met or did not meet based on what the goal was last year and we'll have that information for you. I wrote it down.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
When we gonna get that?
We could have that for you by Thursday meeting. The goal piece. And whether or not we met the goal, we can have that by Thursday's meeting.
Do we also want the other data, the other question answered by Thursday?
I know specifically the goal areas. And we'll work toward the other ones.
And we pay Reese a lot of money. We need to be utilizing their services. They got some content area people. We pay them, get them come over and work with our teachers.
Okay, so goal area two, um, as I mentioned before, this particular goal area, um, we specifically, um, address my quality workforce, specifically the two areas for us, our recognition program, um, as well as our evaluations process. Dr. Simon is gonna just basically talk with you.
You cannot have a positive life with a negative mind. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. So we want to address goal area two of high quality workforce. With that, we want to really hone in on the recognition program and the evaluation system. So I think you have, did they receive the?
Yes, it's on the inside of their.
So, uh, uh, the the creation of the handout came with the thought process of really putting something on paper so we can have this as a guide for our recognition program. I'm going to say this and then I'm gonna move forward. With me, uh, being an administrator going through COVID, as well as being an administrator going through, uh, a serious incident during the Dordic County uh, early two thousand ten days, this is needed for our culture and climate, for our teachers as well as our staff. So with that, the actual program overview gives you something that is definitely needed to really boost up the morale of our faculty, staff, as well as when you do that, it rubs off on our students. So you see the first, well, the second bullet gives you a monthly, uh, recognition, uh, process. Uh, we do that with the district level as well as the, uh, directors. And then we have the individual schools that give, uh, recognition to those, uh, deserving individuals that have gone beyond the call of duty. So a couple of samples of what we do with the Sumter County Schools Recognition Program, uh, we, uh, as I stated, the individual schools uh, as well as, uh, staff members, directors, but certain things we also have done with the retirement and we are doing something that I did not know we did, uh, with, uh, being baptized in this, um, with the community and business stakeholders of the month. And that has been, uh, uh, definitely a pleasing part of what we want to do. Moving forward. The annual celebration comes with the staff, uh, and director of the year, and we have the director of the year sitting among us. So y'all just tip, uh, tip y'all hats off to that beautiful young lady that that's sitting to my, uh, meter left, Dr. Ingram. And we're moving forward with trying to, uh, start off with the teacher of the year program as well, so that'll be coming up shortly. Evaluation. Evaluation is essential to where we need to really use as a tool to teach and coach our teachers to become exemplary in their craft. With that, it's not an I got you moment, but it's a moment where we try to make sure that we get the best and brightest and we develop in-house. Along with the evaluation program, this process is exercised with all our employees, not just the teachers or the paraprofessionals. So if we have a custodian, they have an evaluation. If we have a maintenance person, they have an evaluation and we do that every year. And as well as the directors and the supervisors go through a process where we do, uh, evaluations, uh, through orientations, familiarization, all those stages that we do in the basic state as far as giving them a summative as well as a pre-conference, a mid-conference. All that is across the board with every employee in our district. So, all personnel evaluation, we have to develop a and be a part of the performance goal, which is linked to our district strategic plan and our system, as well as professional growth and learning goal linked to the self-assessment. I'm gonna give kudos to Sumter County again, because, uh, one thing with me coming in, uh, from the outside end, this has definitely been, uh, a learning tool for me to really express what I need to grow professionally as well as developing our learning goal. Other key evaluations, we have counselors, um, now, I did mention one, but I'm I'm not gonna go into it in reference to counselor keys that the state have, but we, I know that's something else. Media specialists go through evaluation, classify staff, like I stated before. Like we said, all staff, faculty and teachers go through an evaluation process. Are there any questions at this time?
Yes, sir. Ms. Knight, we started um, a recognition, a service award, and we gave service award pins. What happened to that?
Yeah, we'll follow back to on that. We'll follow back on, up on that, piggyback on that for it to continue.
Oh, so we had cut it out?
No, we didn't. We hadn't cut out, we just hadn't done it yet.
Right.
Thought at the end of the year, even if we did five-year increments, but I think to recognize, to recognize our people for their service with us.
Five-year, ten-year, yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Is vitally important.
Right.
It is, we, it's still a part of our, our program.
That was just a sample of what we do on the presentation.
We haven't given them out, but that's still a part of our program. We haven't discontinued.
Okay, so when are we planning on giving them their service?
I'll get with Ms. Mr. Dr. Simon on that. We haven't discontinued.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doc. Certainly appreciate it. And so the next goal area for us, um, we are addressing supportive culture and positive climate. We can give it to the other things. And so with that, um, our supportive culture and positive climate, um, some key tenants from that particular area for us is our caring adult program. Um, also addressing for us our district and school level supports, um, as well as, um, for us our restorative practices and our district, um, P B I S planning.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, so our twenty-five, twenty-six attendance.
Well, let me, let me cover this particular piece. Um, here again, our expectations, um, as it relates to the attendance, uh, for us across the board, the very first thing is, uh, making sure that we are addressing our attendance policy across our entire system so that everyone knows what that policy is. See, I'm just going over what we established as the expectation in all of our schools with our leaders and our staff there. Um, the other part of it is our attendance protocol, ensuring that everyone at the school level is following the attendance protocol. We identify for us the specific data pieces that we want to be able to to track and monitor for us across the board. And this particular data is linked back to C C R P I as well. I'm looking at a number of students who, um, are missing, um, less than six days, number of students that are missing more than the fifteen days, also addressing our average daily attendance and our chronic, um, absentee rates, uh, because those are key, um, indicators as it relates to our C C R P I, um, and so we want to continue to address that. We utilize our data teams for being able to identify based on the data, um, where we have some specific areas that we want to address and determine. You know, what may be some of the student causes as it relates to attendance, or what may be some of the adult causes as it relates to attendance. Because one of the things when we start looking at improvement plan, sometimes the attendance may not necessarily be a student absent, it may be the teacher didn't take attendance um, at the appropriate time and go back and log in. So we just take a look at the attendance piece and take a look at the root causes to be able to find out where we are there. We also, um, want to be able to address utilizing here again, our program that we have in place, our panorama, ensuring that everyone is trained and also following and utilizing that program to be able to, um, track and monitor how our students are performing. Be able to look at the established number of of attendance or absences per quarter so that we can make sure that we stay on target um, where our students are, um, as to, as it relates to, um, promotion retention, because we know that that impacts promotion and retention as well. So that we can identify early on when students, um, have attendance issues so then we can be able to continue to communicate with both the students and the parents as to where their child is as it relates to attendance. These were the expectations that we established across our district with all of our leaders in our schools, and so we wanted to make sure that we shared that as a part of this particular process to know this is what we're expecting to happen across this district. So now we move on, Doc, you can move on to the remainder of the S C L, uh, component.
So this is our ninety-day plan, um.
No, she's not new.
No.
Dr. Davis, Dr. Adrian Davis, district associate working, yes. All right.
It's less of her. It's less of her.
All right.
Yes, this is my twentieth year. So this is, uh, a ninety-day plan for our climate and culture. We're gonna focus on attendance, the caring adult program and S C L activities for adults as well as our students. Oh, my God. Attendance performance for twenty-four, twenty-five, so our goal for the twenty-four, twenty-five, um, school year for our average daily attendance was ninety-five percent. We actually only attained a ninety-three point nine four percent for our average daily attendance. Our chronic absentee goal was for five, was five percent or less. We actually got five point eighty-nine percent. Our key focus going forward is strengthening our early warning system as it relates to attendance, targeted interventions and family engagement strategies.
How do you all define chronic absenteeism?
Missing ten percent of your enrolled dates.
Do y'all know how many kids missed this past year?
Um, I don't know right off the top of my head how many students it was this year.
Can we get that?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Can it be broken down by?
Grade level.
Yes.
Yeah, grade level.
Grade level or school?
Yes, ma'am.
Those kids that missed that ten percent because that's, that dings us.
Right.
Yes, ma'am, it does, but we we are, you know, with the new attendance law, we are falling under that six percent, so that's that's to our credit, but yes, ma'am, I'll definitely get that data for you. Um, our climate surveys, so our school climate surveys, every year, our students, teachers, um, faculty and staff have to complete our climate surveys. And based on that data, um, and comparing that with our caring adult program, I'm proud to say we had over three thousand four hundred and sixty-four students connected to a caring adult. However, based on that climate survey, we looked at on the elementary level, the percentage of students, um, feeling comfortable, going, um, asking an adult for help, our target was seventy-eight percent and we actually had ninety-two percent of our students that answered that question favorably. In the middle school, high school level, the percentage of adults that show they care about students, our target was seventy-three percent and actually ninety, uh, one percent of our students answered that question favorably. And for the middle high school level, the percentage of adults that show respect towards students, um, our target was seventy-three percent and actually ninety-one percent of our students an- answered that question favorably.
Does that have to do with, and I guess in my mind, I'm a student and I know Mr. Kiers is my person, my go-to person. Is that, is that how that caring adult?
Yes, ma'am. Each student is is matched with a adult that they feel that they can go to. If they're having any issues in school, that is their person that they can go to and talk to.
So how do y'all monitor, measure that? Because I understand that question, that could be somebody they really liked that wasn't even assigned to me.
Yes, ma'am, so this. So am I hearing you correct? How do we monitor if they're being connected to the adult? We have built in time where they can meet and and connect with their caring adult. And within, like, when we have new students that enroll, they have two weeks to match up a student with an, with a caring adult.
Is there some type of survey done for that?
This year we will be doing, um, impact, uh, surveys. Yes, ma'am.
Right.
Is this the survey one hundred percent of the population or what's the survey number? I mean, it's percentage, but is it one hundred percent of the students?
No, sir, one hundred percent of the students did not complete the climate surveys.
Okay, so what percentage completed the climate survey?
I don't have those numbers, but I can get them. I can get the percentage that actually completed.
I mean, I'm asking, I guess my question is, ninety-one percent of the high, middle high schools' students said everything was good. What is ninety-one percent representative of the population of those schools?
Sure.
Does that make sense? I mean, you're giving me a percentage.
Right.
I want to see a number that that's based off of versus if you got a thousand and you only asked two hundred.
Right.
That doesn't mean a whole lot when you say you got ninety-one percent.
I don't want to give you, I want to say it's seven hundred and fifty-nine students, but I don't want to answer off the top of my head.
You understand how I'm asking the question? A percentage is great, but it's a percentage of what?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Yes, sir. I know it's offered to all students, but-
Understand? That's why I'm asking the question, because I'd like to know. It's offered all, how many took it versus how many-
So, to determine whether or not we have a great representative sample from the population of students.
Is important.
Right.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Student safety perception on the same climate survey, on the question if students always feel safe on the elementary level, the target was sixty-four percent, eighty-three percent of our students. And again, I would get the total population of students that actually answered the survey. On the middle and high school level, the students that feel safe on the bus, the target was sixty-three percent, eighty-one percent answered favorably. There was a marked improvement in safety perception, surpassing targets by wide margins.
Y'all didn't do the survey at the middle and high for feeling safe at school?
Say it again.
I see the elementary feeling safe at school. You didn't do the middle and high for safe at school? I see you did bus, but not at school.
So, this data is actually derived from our district improvement survey. And so, we had targeted questions that we picked from that survey. That survey is like thirty, forty questions. We only picked certain questions under climate and culture that we looked at from that survey. We didn't-
Feeling safe at school is a good one, but I'm saying, how do the middle and high school kids feel?
I didn't look at that data yet.
That's what I'm talking about. We did the elementary, but how do the middle and high school feel?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
We did them on the bus, but we didn't do them at school. That was my question.
Yes, ma'am. I'll definitely have that data for you. This is our panorama survey results from our staff and teacher well-being. Our staff belonging, our previous year, it was sixty-seven percent. We went up to seventy-six percent. As it relates to our staff well-being, it was sixty-four percent, and it went up to seventy-six percent. As it relates to teacher well, belonging, it was sixty-one percent, and then it went up to sixty-four percent. Well-being was sixty-four percent for teachers, and it went up to sixty-eight percent. Our student SEL competency trends and our panorama survey results. So, we looked at these SEL tenants, emotional regulation, self-management, social awareness, and self-efficacy. We had gains in second and third grade and seventh and eighth grade in these areas. Self-management was the strongest growth among our ninth through twelfth grade. Social awareness was mixed result with modest gains. And then self-efficacy was increased in most grades, but early grades needed more support as it relates to self-efficacy, them believing that they can actually do the work. So, overall, upward trends with targeted SEL integration needed in our younger grades. Our ninety-day action plan for attendance. We want to launch weekly attendance monitoring with principals. Panorama allows, has a dashboard that principals can look at at a glance and see where their students are. So, we're definitely making sure that we utilize that. Implement targeted home visits for chronically absent students and incentivize high attendance at class and school levels. The caring adult program, maintain and expand the mentor-student matching tracking and introduce monthly check and connect events. And those events, we will expand those to make sure that we have time that the students will be able to check in with their caring adult. Social-emotional activities for students. Maintain and expand the mentor and matching tracking and samter circles. Those are community circles where we center student voice, where they will have a prompt, and the students will convene a circle, and they will go around and answer that prompt. As it relates to SEL activities for adults, morning mindfulness and gratitude moments, three to five minutes daily or weekly, guided breathing, stretching, or gratitude prompts over the PA system or in staff meetings can be led by staff volunteers. Again, the circle of meetings, monthly samter, restorative or community circles for staff to share successes, challenges, and ideas. It builds relational trust and collaborative problem solving and positive posted campaigns. Staff leave encouraging sticky notes for colleagues in common areas or mailboxes. It creates a culture of appreciation and belonging.
So, everybody's expected to do that?
Yes, ma'am. That's what we're going to be pushing this year. Wellness Wednesday, that's definitely, Samter Middle School took advantage of this. They had a Wellness Wednesday newsletter that they utilize, and they will continue that. Story swap during lunches and shout-out walls or virtual kudo boards will also be utilized. Emotional check-in boards, simply check-in charts, and staff lounges where adults can place magnets or stickers to share how they are feeling that day. It promotes emotional awareness and empathy in school-wide acts of kindness. Staff edition, a theme week focused on intentional kindness acts toward colleagues, smile gestures, compliments, or supports. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
I just want to know, we're talking about student attendance. What happened when the teacher missed more days than the student? Yes. How did it work?
What impact does it have?
Yes, yes, the impact on the student, yes.
I know the, well, research says that it does impact the student. Definitely in a negative way, but as far as what happens, I'm sure that's taken care on the principal level through their evaluations or whatever. Because at this time, our teacher attendance, average daily attendance should be ninety-seven percent.
So, teacher absence is addressed through the evaluation process by the administrator under the area professionalism. That's one of the specific things. And here again, that's another piece of data, Ms. Vivins, that we have to go and correlate to look at when it relates to student achievement and how the students are performing, and then look at the teacher attendance and see whether or not that is impacting the students' academic performance as well. But from a standpoint of what happens, that is addressed through the evaluation process.
Not what happened to the teacher. How does it affect the learning?
Oh, it negatively affects the learning, as based on what she mentioned about the research in terms of when the teacher is absent a significant amount of days, ten or more, that it impacts whether or not, it correlates with whether or not the students are receiving instruction relative to whether a veteran teacher or a novice teacher. And so, that has an impact on the student achievement, based on what their research says.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Situation like the teacher is more-
Yes, ma'am.
Than the student, and they're missing instruction.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Knight, if we could get at the end of each quarter, kids that have chronic abs, the number of kids that have chronic absences.
Yes, of course, you know, we-
Each nine weeks, so that we could-
Yes, ma'am. That's one of the, when we talked about what the expectations were. And having that particular information, the schools are getting that, we'll be able to provide that in our quarterly monitoring updates for the board on those, on that information.
And we're also notifying the parents early on.
Yes, and that was a part of what that expectation was. For us, first of all, to identify who those students are, and then providing the necessary intervention supports for them, but also to communicate with the students and the parents as to what their progress is.
And yes, sir.
That was on that expectations.
I just know one time, we had this big thing at the end of the year.
Yes.
Parents were concerned about, you know, not having that communication throughout the year on, hey, you know, my child makes X, Y, Z, and now, now we're at the end of the year. So, just making sure that-
And we followed the attendance protocol. And our protocol outlines what we do at each absent.
Yes, sir.
We have it. I don't remember where we follow it, but, you know. And if we could know how many kids, in that quarterly report, how many kids are in attendance support, that, you know, there are meetings being held on these kids now.
Yes, ma'am.
If we can know that, how many have reached that point?
Oh, I guess you mean, attend the support team meeting? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. I'm sure everyone's following.
Thank you.
All right. So, the next area for us, under the same category, is centered around our discipline and behavior. And so, here again, across our entire system, one of the expectations that we outlined for us across the district, first and foremost, is that everyone is following the specific policies that are linked back to our discipline across the system. And then, of course, the next area for us is to ensure, here again, the code of conduct's outlined in our handbooks, and each, where every school is following that. We're implementing our positive behavior intervention supports, PBIS, as a framework across all of our schools. Here again, having the data teams to be able to track and monitor key data pieces that relates to discipline across the system as it relates to the number of panorama referrals, because we have both Infinite Campus and Panorama. Those particular systems and platforms that house the discipline data. So, we want to make sure that we're cross-referencing what we have in Panorama with what we have in Infinite Campus, identifying in terms of in-school interventions, in the number of days the students are in those, out-of-school suspensions, identifying those particular areas well, making sure that we identify the data teams that's looking at the data to determine what are the root causes for the major issues, whether it are student issues or whether it are adult issues. And we want to be able to, that we're addressing those. Here again, utilizing Panorama as our specific tool across our entire system, and then ensuring that we're addressing the restorative practices as a part of our discipline framework across the board. And then, of course, making sure that here again, the celebrations are taking place. This is also what we mentioned, the celebrations for attendance, celebrations for academics, celebrations for discipline, and that other key component always can make sure that we're communicating to the student and the parents as to what those specific issues are well in advance, so that we can head off any specific issues from being major problems on down the road. And so, these are the expectations that we've set for with the administration in those particular, in our schools, as to what we're expecting to happen across the system.
Mr. Knight, with Panorama, I know you say all, everything goes through there. That information isn't sent to the state, is it?
No, ma'am.
What comes out of Panorama with discipline that is entered, that will go to the state? You know what I'm saying? Because we have to report, right?
Well, what happened is, yeah, we're sending Infinite Campus is what goes to the state. Nothing from Panorama. Panorama data didn't go to the state.
Oh, okay.
Panorama data didn't go to the state. Our Infinite Campus data goes to the state.
So, nothing in Panorama is in Infinite Campus?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
What we strategize, what is, based on the problem steps that each school has, minor, major, they work through the Panorama. If there's something major that needs to be reported to the state based on their problem-solving methods in their school, then they put that in Infinite Campus, and it integrates back to the Panorama. So, Panorama is more like a working system where you are building those supports, you're working with the students, looking at holistic data to make those significant plans for behavior, academics, and attendance. So, that's, that's kind of-
So, to get back to your question, as it relates to, each school has a specific matrix, and they have a level of progressive discipline. So, the very, very minor, minor things that go in Infinite Campus don't necessarily, I mean, go in Panorama don't necessarily end up in inside of Infinite Campus. Those major things or a collective amount of things that happen at minor level from Panorama end up in Infinite Campus, and those are the things that actually go to the state.
So, a teacher can write a student up as a disciplinary issue, and it not, it just stays in Panorama, doesn't go anywhere?
Depending on the level of it and based on how the school operates.
Possibly just-
It could possibly be a pattern, a pattern of behavior looked at. Depending on how it's defined, Ms. Hamilton, if it's one of those levels, or is it here based on what the school has set for as far as their process? Because if someone is chewing gum, that may not be something necessarily needed to go into Infinite Campus if we can build around the child to teach him better ways to appropriately do what he needs to do.
There are things that, there are things, yes, ma'am, there are things that are in Panorama-
And they're looking for that write-up.
Right, that does not, that does not come into Infinite Campus. So, but they, but there are established what those particular incidents that will go into Infinite Campus, that the administrators will be addressing. That's already established in the matrix.
Right. And teams-
Each school has a matrix. They have their own, they have a different matrix.
Right. And the teams, the way we have our teams operating, meeting monthly, and scrutinizing that data, they can determine what student needs what, or what teacher needs, what teacher needs that support based on that data and Panorama.
Just them on a teacher, and sometime you hear a teacher say they wrote a child up.
Yes.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's something we're-
And that's something, yes.
And the writer wasn't there, and nothing ever happened.
And that is an action. Yes, ma'am. That is an action that we really working hard to improve. We want, we want all eyes on data. If we can get all eyes on the data pieces, we really can make a difference. Because numbers, to me, they're just numbers. I want to get down, we're all on the same page of what you're thinking. We want to get down to what the behavior is and how we can get those supports in to help the student change his behavior.
And at the same hand, let the teacher feel supported.
That's right. And that's what, that's the driver action that we really pushing this year. And Mr., our new associate superintendent is definitely on board with it also. So, we're going to move on.
Have all the teachers been trained on restorative?
We're, if, yes, ma'am, we're going to get to more of that in my session, if we can.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. When we, this is transitioning into culture and climate, I'm moving forward with our area. When we talk about climate, it's how we feel. How we feel in the school, you know, the day-to-day atmosphere, relationships, experiences in the school. Are we safe? Are we respected? Are we supported? That's what we mean when we say climate. When we talk about culture, it's how it's done. The long-term shared values, beliefs, traditions that shape those behaviors in decision-making. Even the culture of being a panther, that's culture. We want to be Panthers, right? So, that shapes your culture, those beliefs, the values, okay? Looking at goal area three, performance objective three, initiative one, we implement positive behavior supports, PBIS. The goal in this area is to increase the fidelity measure of PBIS implementation by ten percentage. And one of the tools that we use to measure that is our TFI. TFI is our tier fidelity inventory. It's a measurement that we take, a tool through observation, where we visit schools to the extent to which personnel are applying the core features of PBIS. We want to know if they're implementing it with fidelity. And so, we look at certain components of that, like the teams, the teaching expectations, the data systems, how well we involve the families in the process. Those are some of the measures that come under the TFI, the tier fidelity inventory. And as you can see in FY twenty-three, the first column, that's where we were. And then, if you go to the last column, that's where we ended last year, based on that tier fidelity inventory. Okay? So, you can see with that particular goal, there was a ten percentage increase based on where we started. Okay? Okay? The next initiative is initiative two, how we implement ev- events such as our Honors Day, monthly socials, nine-week celebration to celebrate su- success. Because we know when praises go up, blessings come down. And um we know our students, you know, they they come in, they do the right thing, they want to be praised for that. They want to be praised daily for what they do, and that is kind of what shapes your culture and climate. And that's what we want to see, we want to see many students a part of these celebrations. And on last year, our winner for the PBIS video was Sumter County Primary School. As you can see, um those, it's amazing how our students look when they are rewarded with something. They're, you you can see the the smiles and and that's kind of what culture and climate is all about. How do we build in in that area, okay? The next goal we have is to decrease the number of office referrals district-wide by ten percent. In our discipline platform, we're looking at um Infinite Campus data. As I explained, what goes in Infinite Campus does integrate back to the panorama as well. Um so in that particular area, we can see uh from August to May of FY twenty-four, we start, we had, we left with three thousand seven hundred and forty-eight. Um FY twenty-five, we had um two thousand five hundred and sixteen infractions reported to the state. So that particular goal uh was met based on what we've measured for that year. That's the entire school. So numbers are what we see. That's, you know, if we want to see that, but at the same time, we do want to do what we can to help students change problem behaviors.
So the, so the ultimate objective for us across the board, um when it comes to discipline and behavior is to reduce um the um actual offenses and the type of offenses. So we reduce the behavior issues across the system. That's the ultimate goal when it comes to the discipline. Now, we have to have a mechanism for measuring and tracking that, which is all the office discipline referrals. And so, but that's only just one aspect of it, because the ultimate goal is to reduce the behavior incidents um and infractions that we we, we can make sure that the culture and climates in the school environments are conducive to learning. Um and we are making sure that we're maximizing what happens in the classroom. So that's the ultimate goal, is to be able to address those behaviors and the behavior incidents so um across the board. And to be able to provide the necessary supports um for our students and the staff to be able to make that happen.
So moving to next steps, we will um, we will have our district-wide PBIS kickoff the week of August twenty-fifth through the twenty-ninth. Uh we will also this year integrate the restorative writing component in our in-school intervention. Because we know writing is weighs a lot when it comes to G-mass achievement. And we want to um be able to integrate those practices when students have to attend, well, re- be removed from the classroom and going into another setting for intervention. Uh we also want to continue with the ongoing restorative practice training. Uh we've, we've uh met with our I- ISI instructors and we're building the schedule to rotate back into the schools to work with classroom teachers more. We did have, we're, we were able to do an overall review with all the teachers last year, but of course, we know we have new teachers on board. So we will continue with the ongoing restorative practice throughout the district.
How often y'all having those training?
Sir.
How often are y'all having the training?
Um, well, in our collaboratives, we do some practices in our multiple collaboratives where it's provided for leaders and is delivered back in the building. But the trainer itself, the main trainer, our goal is to have him to come into the schools to rotate around um starting soon. So that could be um once a month, starting.
Are we going by each school? Are we just choosing which school we'll start with?
We're gonna start, uh we're gonna, it's our goal to do all schools like we did last year. Maybe earlier in the year than compared to last year when we were trying to step with the new program. Are there any other questions?
So I guess I go back in my question, has everyone been trained on restorative practice?
Every, every, I would not say everyone at this time, because we have new teachers, but we.
Thinking of new, but the staff we had before.
They have majority of everyone who were, who were present when the trainer um was there. We, we made sure that he rotated in the schools to give them that training, yes ma'am.
Everyone has not. When you say majority, that's still no, everyone has not.
We made it to all the schools and we look, we're looking at who was not based on the roster. Some may have missed that day, and we, we're trying to follow up with that piece.
Dr. Smith, is there, is there a uh data piece that's just centered around PBIS? Um just to see the effectiveness of it, is there a data piece that is just centered around PBIS that like we can kind of see just the effectiveness of the actual program itself, how effective it is? Is there a data piece that's just centered around just PBIS period? That's what, that's.
Well, we, yes sir, like it's, it's some components in this TFIS, this this tier fidelity report. When we do a walkthrough, there are major components that we look for in the schools when we do our walkthrough to see if it's evidence, and there are artifacts that the teams have to bring to the table as well. So it's a lot of pieces in there, I don't mind sharing that maybe in another session, um but yeah.
Well, I guess the question, the question that you're having, Ms. Mr. Jackson, is relative to, is there a specific data piece that's centered around that ties directly back to just PBIS?
Correct.
But because it's so comprehensive, there's multiple av- facets of it. This piece right here just tells whether or not um the actual program is implemented to where it's supposed to be, which is the components. But in terms of what the outcome data is, that goes back to the celebration, that goes back to the reduction in office discipline referral, it goes back to multiple pieces. And it's not just one single data piece or data point that points back to the PBIS program.
And it's tied up to this piece here, because if you're doing everything with fidelity, these, these numbers are gonna, should be shifting.
Yes, so that varies.
And and one of the things we had asked with the training of all the teachers, wanted to assess the teachers to determine their perception of effectiveness.
Yes ma'am.
Restorative practice, but we couldn't because everyone had not been.
Well, at the, there was a sample survey done at the end. Uh we can maybe possibly bring that piece. I did, remember, I promised you that I would do a survey to get the perceptions of the faculty, because that's something you asked for, and we put it out there. Now, did we get a large sample of people to complete it? No, but we got a good sample of perceptions about it. And I, I don't mind sharing that if Mr. Knight wants me to share that and a later date.
Yep. That's good. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
If I may, I'm, I'm getting ready to leave, Ms. Knight, and I've already spoken with Mr. Jackson. He will be taking over for me, and I will see you all on Thursday.
Yes ma'am. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank y'all for your support.
Thank you, Doc. Alrighty. So our goal area four is centered around our stakeholder engagement and communication. So um we will speak specifically to our Sumter County Way Communications Plan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um I will share updates on goal area four. Um stakeholder engagement and communication, specifically performance objective one, to implement and sustain effective communication processes with all stakeholders. Um initiative one, develop and implement this SCS way of communicating with all stakeholders. Um to carry out goal area four, we built a communication plan and have begun implementation. Um the plan is rooted in four communication channels, social media, traditional media such as newspapers, TV, and radio, as well as crisis communication and our district-wide communication platform. At the heart of our plan is a simple but powerful focus, which is to tell our story. We want to continue throughout this school year to highlight the great things that are happening inside of Sumter County Schools, while also implementing a universal communication platform to enhance two-way communication. One of the most visible parts of our storytelling is the Inside Sumter Video Campaign. Um season one showcased the programs and initiatives in our district. Um we wrapped up season one um in July, and episode five, A Year in Review, will release on August eighteen. Um we are gearing up for season two, where we will take a deeper look inside Sumter County Schools by highlighting student academics and extracurricular ac- uh achievements. Um we will also focus on outstanding accomplishments of faculty and staff. Um we have been tracking um district-wide publications for the past two years and um saw significant growth um over those two years. Um this year, we're off to a strong start. Uh in July alone, we had twenty-three district publications and seventy-one system-wide publications. Our Facebook reach remains strong um with over one hundred and sixty-one thousand views and more than twenty-five hundred interactions in just the last twenty-eight days. Um also in those past twenty-eight days, our Facebook followers have increased by eleven percent, and we're currently at one thousand one hundred and sixty-seven followers.
You got a YouTube?
Our YouTube channel um continues to grow. Um right now, we have thirty subscribers, a significant increase. Go ahead.
I think I'm one.
I know we had you.
You, you subscribed?
I think I do.
Awesome. Um if not, then you know, our handle is at Sumter County Schools, um at Inside Sumter County Schools for any of the um social media platforms. Uh again, um in June, I reported that was thirteen, and so we are seeing that subscriber um increase. And so we will keep promoting those subscriptions um over the course of this year. Our district Instagram page officially launched on August the eighth. And so if you want to s- take a screenshot or picture, photo, you can join. I will warn you that we haven't published anything as of yet. Something will be up tomorrow. And we were focused on um releasing the rally video. I am again working with work-based learning student. I have um Lauren Harris, uh our flex winner. Um she's working with me this year, and so she's an audiovisual student um in her third semester, or she had one more semester ago. So I'm excited about working with her, and so we've released a couple of videos. Also, I don't know if you noticed, but we were on the news for Open House, uh WTVM. And I'll be pushing that up um out on our uh YouTube channel, but um you should all ship finding on our Facebook page. And our redesigned websites went live July twenty-fourth.
Stop that.
Yes, yes.
They're gone.
Got to get used to it.
Say that again?
They're gone.
So um basically, it's, it's more user-friendly, um mobile-responsive, and um it's designed to make information more accessible. Um we are, you know, the schools have had access to the school-level websites. Um and we are still trying to perfect that content, so we're, we're still working it. Um I'll just say like, the video that's on the district website uh is of the retirement um session that was held at the board meeting um back in June. I think it was June, June or May. Uh but we are working to create a video that highlights the students um and what's going on around campus. So um Ms. Harris, we'll be working on that. So we are just going to continue to improve on the um displaying of that, the content on the websites.
So the uh audiovisual has started with Sumter TV, which I.
Which is awesome. Oh, good.
Oh, if, if our website, are you going to implement, or they can actually put, you go through the content, see if they can add content to go, or how did I know that would work?
Well, um the school has a website, so we can have that discussion in our um PR collaborative, IT PR collaborative, and we could talk about if and how they're going to display that content on the website and that there's a desire to see it there. Um I've seen some of the, the videos myself, so I'll make sure we have that conversation in our collaborative meeting.
I'm glad they started.
Oh, yeah.
Good.
Alright. In June, we adopted Class Dojo as our universal communication platform. Um this will allow teachers, families, and the district to communicate in one consistent, organized space. Uh previously, it only targeted um K through eighth, and recently, Class Dojo targeted K through twelve. And so um we have officially adopted it. Um we've done our rostering, and we're still cleaning it up and um working on professional development. Uh we have some PD going on tomorrow at the high school for the platform. Um we're also already tracking how it's being used. Um I have some data there. Um participation data is being collected to help us identify where engagement is strong and where additional support or training may be helpful. At this time, I just wanted to provide a visual of some of that data, uh but there is more robust data uh on the utilization of the platform that I'll be sharing um during the upcoming year. So whatever our, our next steps, um they include refreshing our task force membership roster as needed, uh providing professional learning for staff on our communication tools and strategies, monitoring the effectiveness of our plan, and continuing to tell the great story of Sumter County Schools. And that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Are we going, going in the right direction?
Oh, we're heading in the right direction.
On that Class Dojo data.
Mm-hmm.
Go back there a minute. I see the primary school, is that just most recent?
Time frame?
What, what?
So, so honestly, that timeframe, I don't have a copy of the, but it's, it's since we started school. I will say this, um the earlier grades, like Sumter County Primary, Sumter County Elementary School, and Sumter County Intermediate School, they have been using Class Dojo for a while. So those parents are still familiar with the platforms, they still have those connections. That's why you're seeing more utilization. Um the middle and high school, not so much. The middle school has used it um in previous years, but it wasn't consistently used, they were utilizing Remind. And so um at the high school level, they weren't pretty much using it at all. So they are the first one that have jumped on PD, they are excited uh about utilizing that pl- platform. They've already had a train-to-trainer um session with Class Dojo for PD, and they will be um in their study groups tomorrow, pushing out that training. And then we're going to continue to um train the, even retrain um the teachers in the lower grades over the next month or so.
So that's not free, is it?
It is free.
It's free.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely free, um you know.
This is one of the things that allowed us to adopt this, then recently, they re- previously, they didn't have it available for the high school in terms of getting this particular portion, so they were utilizing whatever they wanted to, whatever they needed to Remind and some of the other platforms. So we wanted to streamline and have the same one platform for all the parents to be able to connect with all of their kids, because we know parents have multiple kids in different schools, so they would utilize different platforms to try to communicate with the teachers. And so this is the one that we've adopted for, and it's free, um that we utilize across our entire system.
Class Dojo, I, I get, I get, I put my children out there like that, I get emails that they didn't completely assign me.
Oh, yes.
And it comes through the email, but what is, uh you know, a lot of people don't have email.
Well, I.
Dojo setup, go down to their cell phone?
So I, I think what you're getting is those Infinite Campus notifications.
Well, I'm saying.
But Class Dojo, you have an app on your phone and it comes directly to your phone. So it does require, you know, a mobile device, some type of device that connects to.
Infinite Campus.
Yes.
And so the class, the Class Dojo will be to come to your device.
Right, and and you know, what you see there is parents and messages being sent. Um also in the report, it'll show where parents are sending messages to the teachers. And so we'll be able, like I say, um that partnership is good, but it's through mobile devices that.
Track that two-way communication.
Yeah, it's gonna allow us to track that communication, that two-way communication without the partnership we weren't able to obtain this data before.
Thanks, Doc. So we're moving into goal area five for us, where there's our organizational and operational effectiveness. And so at this particular time, we're connecting with um our maintenance facilities, um areas, um as well as um we will have a, a very brief. as well as we will have a very brief information regarding our nutrition and transportation as well. That'll be one of the board items that we have.
All right, so our facilities maintenance plans for this year, based on Goal Area Five Performance Objective Two Initiative One, which has improved the safety and health of our physical environment. So first, we have our capital projects. What we're going to work on this year, re-roof of the Sumter County Middle School and also re-key some buildings for security based on some audits that I've made throughout the year. For our energy conservation, we have our energy-saving plan for all stakeholders. We're going to start working with, in all of our collaboratives for the rest of the month. We already have the plan, and we're going to get feedback on it and put it in place in September. Install additional automatic light sensors throughout all of our buildings to make sure that we are, making sure that the lights are not always on when they're not in use.
Y'all going to install those?
We, we've started installing. We're installing additional ones.
I mean, in-house, we're.
Yes, ma'am. We're installing in-house. Yes, ma'am. We're improving our HVA efficiency, HVAC efficiency. I noted throughout my audits this past year, fiscal year, that we can improve in some of our HVAC efficiency as far as cleaning, as far as making sure everything is running correctly. So we're working on improving that. Yes, sir.
Couple of months ago, Mr. Hoff, we paid for something, the monitor, something at the high school that we paid for.
We didn't do that, actually.
We didn't pay, we didn't buy.
We did do that.
No, we did not do that.
We didn't buy.
Okay.
I'm also auditing our energy consumption each month. That's one of the things that I've been working on. For our safety plans, we've got our state security grant, which we'll discuss with the principals as well on Wednesday. We want to improve our security equipment. This may be upgrading some of the security equipment we have in our schools or adding additional equipment to our schools. We have, we need to perform some safety and security training, make sure everyone is up to date on the training. And I actually have been working with our local emergency management agencies, such as fire, police, sheriff, the sheriff's office, and the Department of Homeland Security in Atlanta to get these trainings in place. All right, we want to increase our card access usage. We installed, based on our state security grant that we had this past school year, we installed more access points in some of the schools. But we want to increase the usage of the card access because we have several people who still, they either don't have cards and they're still using keys, or they're not using their card to get into the building. They're still using keys. So we want to provide training on that and increase our access usage, card access usage.
Go get us one for over here.
I have been working on that. I've been trying to work on it for a couple of months. Yes, I want to give you a card access for this building. Yes, ma'am. I'm going to get there, I promise. Syntegix training. Syntegix is a system that we use. It's our personal emergency alert system that we use throughout our schools, throughout our campuses. We want to make sure that everybody's up to date on their training and make sure that everyone knows how to use that system because it does, if there's an emergency, that does tie in to our local emergency agencies as well.
So that's working well.
It's been working well.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'm very pleased with that system so far. And with some new laws that have been coming out, the Syntegix system already makes us compliant to those laws, which is wonderful. We don't have to do anything new. I'm also coordinating, continuing my coordination, as I mentioned, with local emergency management agencies. Any questions?
All right. One other item that's coming up on our agenda, if we could go ahead and take a look at it, if we would come forward, I think we have Mr. Harnich and Ms. Gooden. I don't have the clicker, so we can click the next two slides. These are two areas that's coming up. But I know we got quite a bit that we're going to cover in our discussion, so if we can go ahead and address these two items for these two individuals as it comes up on our agenda.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's time for the annual renewal on our GPS and telematics service. It's 28, 254, 96. Last year, we paid it with splosh, and we have in other years. So we would like to fund it that way. Anybody got any questions about it?
Is the renewal right?
That's right.
Yes.
Is it based on the number of buses or just?
Number of licenses. We also have it on white fleet vehicles and our buses.
So it allows us to be able to GPS, use GPS to track our, monitor vehicles in terms of where they are.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so we'll get to that one on our agenda.
Hi. So we have a freezer unit at the primary school that is no longer functioning, functioning on a regular basis. It needs a new freezer condenser, and that's what this Georgia, Central Georgia Refrigeration is for. Freezer condensing unit and evaporators. The previous unit was from 1999, so it has well seen its better days. We're limping it along right now, but Sam Service and Central Georgia Refrigeration have told us it's a matter of time before it completely goes out. And at that particular school, we just have one freezer. So that is our ask for that, and that's a pretty significant need for us for that particular school right now. That was really all I had.
And this will come up on, under property as well, so we wanted to go ahead and take a look at that.
And funding for this was how, ma'am?
It's going to go under our equipment, under equipment line, under our budget for this year.
I was going to say, it's your budget, right?
Yeah, it's my budget. But this one's kind of a need, so. Thank you.
So very quickly, could we take a five-minute break? We've been going two hours, take a five-minute break before we move into the next portion of our agenda, which will move into the topics for discussion and the rest of the board agenda. Adjustment to our agenda, if our governor's team would allow us to do so, we're going to move forward to the financial reports, and then we will circle back to some of our other areas.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm going to talk about the board reports. The first two board reports that you have, it's the fuel and the transportation. And if you notice, the transportation report, it has been revised slightly. It includes all vehicles, not just the school buses now. Did y'all notice that?
Where is that?
The transportation report. Normally, it was just the school buses, but it's all the vehicles now.
Fuel report. It's the fuel report.
No, the transportation report.
Because when I, okay, when I look at transportation, I don't, I don't see any vehicle.
No, it's just amounts included in there, the totals. The totals used to be include only the buses. Now including the white fleet as well in the total amounts.
Why? Can I ask why? Because the buses are much more important than these little trucks running around. I'd like to know what the school bus mileage is.
Okay.
I mean, that's important for our, that's students.
I'll definitely go read back. That came from transportation, so we'll be there to bring that back to you.
School bus miles mean more than transportation of other people. School buses carry the one.
Oh, yeah.
Number one.
Sure.
Students.
True.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm like Miss, I'm a board member. I'm just, I want to know how many miles our school buses are running.
Okay, I understand.
Sure, we got you.
Because we wouldn't, I wouldn't have known that just by looking at it.
Yeah.
All right, so that's why we want to definitely make y'all know that we will get that information for you.
I mean, if you got it broken down, I'd love to see the other side of it, too. If you got them out there, if you can add them together, you can make them separate.
Sure.
Just make them a separate line.
Okay.
That we can see all the miles.
Okay. Any more questions on that? And I will get with Mr. Harnich and get that information to you.
Because the fuel side is broken down, but the mile side is not.
Right. We make a note of that? Sure. Okay.
Okay.
Ms. Carter?
The next report is the preliminary cash report, cash flow report. As of right now, the report shows general fund balance as of July 31st was $15,55,124.90, and that's a combination of the OT RS and CBG2. As of July 31st, they combined $4,558,674.29 was available for capital and/or special projects, outstanding accounts, OT RS3, CB11, and Regents 8.
Did you say five or four? What'd you say? Four million?
Four.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Ms. Nye, do you know what else has to come out of that special project that we already?
Say again?
That we already agreed to come out of there. Is there anything else coming out of that special project that we already earmarked?
I would have to go back and double-check Ms. Hamilton to see exactly what has come out already and what needs to come out for the remainder of what's in that balance.
That number hadn't, I asked that last one, that number hadn't changed.
Did you understand? Yeah, I'll double-check.
Yes, sir, just, we want to try to keep up with it.
But what's, okay. Yeah. I'll double-check that.
Okay. The next report is the revenue, the revenue that was received for the month of July. It's three pages, and the amount that was received is on the last page. We received $4,201,749.55.
These in red that are subtractive, what?
Those, the figures in red, those are the subtractions that comes with QBE. And the report has the, it's called the QBE less five mils negative amounts. So when that QBE report comes, those have to be posted because they are in the totals. I have to post those as a negative.
Okay. That's us having to have to pay our share.
That's, yeah. The five mils from the military. Okay, the next report is the vendor, vendor payment that was paid during the month of July 2025. And it's, it's about 15 pages because it's front and back, so actually it's about 30-something pages. And it has all of the vendors that we paid during the month of July.
I, I do like that they're grouped by the vendor. That makes it a little bit easier.
Be like that, okay?
Yeah. And Ms. Nye, do you know what we're paying? I saw a lot under safety. What are we paying for under that?
What page?
I got to go find it, yeah. Anybody know that safety? I should have written it down.
The vendor number?
I'm trying to, I know it was under safety for, and each school was listed, so. But I didn't know what we were paying for in terms of safety. Anybody else see it? You can go ahead, if I find it, I'll.
And once we find it, depending on what it is, we may want to.
Was it Safety Max? Was it safety max?
Safety grant, it's under Johnson Electronics. On page twenty-nine, maybe?
The school safety grant? Hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
That we're paying out, this is what we're paying. On page twenty-nine.
What's the vendor number?
Um, eleven ninety-six.
Twenty-nine, we'll, 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 we'll talk about those because it's listing time about the safety.
Okay.
And so we'll be there to share that with you. But it's for Johnson Electric, but it'll be for our safety components.
Okay, so we'll talk about you.
Yes, ma'am.
Explain that to us, okay.
Okay, anything else from the vendor list?
Oh, those contracts for kids, what we contract this summer with kids for? At the very end.
For my maintenance department, had the students to be able to assist our maintenance across our system with moving items and things of that nature, just to be able to have some additional manpower for the number of projects that we had to get done across the system. So we contracted with having students to be able to do some of those things.
Move furniture?
Move furniture, desks.
Painting?
Say again?
They have to paint? Do they do any painting? They didn't do any painting?
Do what now?
Painting.
Oh, they did some painting as well? Yes. Yes, ma'am. Initially, and then we did no longer use them for painting. So they did a variety of things depending on what the specific schools needed and what the custodians were able to have them to do. So it was a variety of different things from.
So what, we do advertise for that? How do kids know about that?
Well, I think the, we mentioned that with the schools and the administrators in the school, so I'm not sure exactly all the details, but I'll be there to provide that to you. But I think he made contact with the schools relative to the students that they were having to be able to support doing that. But I know he reached out to the schools to do that, the administrators. But now what definitive mechanism the schools did, I'm not sure, but I'll try to get that found out.
I didn't know whether it just opened up to all kids.
Right, yes, ma'am.
Apply if they want to, or?
Got you, sure. Yes, ma'am.
Good, Ms. Carter.
Okay, thanks. So the next report is the SPOS revenue for July. And we received four hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-one cents for the month of July. Okay, our next report is the three ninety-six fund balance report. And with this report right here, since it is year-end closing and we are in the month of July, I printed two reports, two periods. I did the month of July and then I did from July twenty-four through the end of June the thirtieth. So I'll talk about the July one first. So for July, the report shows the completion period is eight point thirty-three percent. And that's because we just started July, we just got, we're just in the new year.
Is that July one of 2025 through the end of July 2025?
Yes, that's the one of them.
So it's just one month?
Yeah, it's just one month.
Yes, ma'am.
Trying to figure that out.
Okay, so that was a completion period report, so that's saying that we've only completed like eight point three-three percent of the year.
Why is that budget reflecting twenty-six million at the end? Twenty-six F Y budget.
Where are you looking, Ms. Hamilton?
I'm looking under the first, second, fourth column?
Page, page two, page two at the top, not, not.
Page two?
Yeah, page two of that report, the top page two, not the bottom page two. But they correlate, but the page two at the top.
Just a quick question, the year end is July thirty-first, right? Or am I, or June thirty-first?
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth, right?
Yeah.
So where's the year end? Did I miss it? Or was it?
Now, the report that we're looking at now is just for the first month of.
This report is just for the month of July. And what I know what you guys are, what she's mentioning is the other report, which would have been July first up to June of concluding last year. She mentioned that, but I don't, I don't see that particular report in the document.
No, that's the report I'd like to see.
Right.
Because that's all of the year's money, how we used it and spent it. So have we closed the year? Is that year closed? I mean.
The year is not closed yet. We are working on year-end closing and we are, it has to be closed by August the twenty-second. So we are in process of closing the year.
So we'll definitely provide you all with that particular report because that one's not listed here.
No, it's not here.
It's not, it's not listed, it's not on here. So you're speaking to the one specifically July only.
Okay.
Because the other one is not here.
Okay, and going back on page four, twenty-six F Y budget, fifty-two point two million. And then on the other one, F, twenty-six F Y budget, twenty-six point three million. So I'm just trying to understand, I know there's some rationale, but I don't know. Y'all know we're talking about total revenue?
On page four?
First one on page two. The bottom. I guess I'm looking at that budget.
Ms. Hamilton, you're looking at F Y, on page two, Ms. Carter, on page two, with page two being at the top. Ms. Hamilton, you're speaking to the F Y twenty-six budget in column four. It says twenty-six million, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four sixty-three.
That represents what?
That represents all of those funds in item two, those, the fund and functions. They, that's what they add up to.
And I guess I'm trying to understand how is that with our budget that we have, that we pass? How does that, how does that differ?
That's, that's not the, that's, that's part of it, that's not the whole entire budget.
Right, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah.
What is?
It's, it's broken out in those items, so those items and, and column, the column, the rows that's at top, at top of that report. So it's broken out by different functions. Functions and funds.
So it's, it's just the total of the money we have received? For our budget?
No, we have not received that much money in the month of July, not yet.
Somebody help me understand what's that?
This is the revenues, when you, when you budget, you have to budget like revenues and expenditures. And so that represents part of the revenues that we are saying that we're gonna, gonna receive. And it's adding those, that, those columns. And it's by those functions and funds. And it goes, that's how it goes. And it's, it's the actual revenue that we are seeing, that we're gonna receive in those functions. And also, we, we're in, like I said, the budget is not to be totally completed until August the twenty-second. So there might be some that has not been put in this, in these revenue columns yet. So what you see, the twenty-six, twenty-six million, three seventy-eight, four sixty-three, there, there is gonna be more that's gonna be put on because the budget is gonna be even with revenues versus expenditures. And it will be that budget that you, y'all approved.
So the fifty-two million, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven, that indicative of?
That's, that's on the other, that's the expenditures?
It says the F Y twenty-six budget. And I know that's not, I guess I keep referencing back to our.
The first two pages are revenue. Second two pages are expenditures.
Expenditures.
So you got fifty-two million we're gonna spend. You go back to the first page, column three is what you have collected. You have collected, and tell me if I'm right, folks, two million, six hundred and seven.
Seven, eight, forty-four.
You've collected that, revenue. And that revenue has come from?
Two million?
Two million.
Two million.
Of the twenty-six million?
The twenty, the column four is incomplete, you can just go ahead.
Right.
Just don't even look at it because it does not have all the numbers in it, period. But you've collected two million six.
Right.
Okay, I understand that, I'm just trying to understand what's that?
Twenty-six is?
How it aligns to our budget, that's what I'm trying to understand.
State Q B E, local, some local.
Right, is that what we gotta, we gonna spend? Or we, that's why I asked, did we receive that amount?
No, ma'am, that's what we expect.
That we expect to receive.
That's what we expect to receive.
Twenty-six million.
Twenty-six million on state, local, Q B E.
Got you, okay.
Which is what we expect to receive.
Okay.
Now, the next two pages are what we expect to spend.
Okay. We expect to spend fifty-two million.
That's what we approved, yeah?
Uh-uh.
That's far.
We approved fifty-four, fifty-six?
Once you approve, like fifty-six, it was fifty-six. And that's what I'm saying, this right here, these sheets, these three ninety-sixes, until the actual budget is fully loaded and completed, then there is, is not gonna be accurate.
Okay.
They're gonna change, Ms. Hamilton.
I just keep going back to that fifty-six million I'm trying to see.
How, where are we?
Yeah.
You're trying to figure out where are we? How much have we brought in so far? How much have we spent? And where are we in relation to what we budgeted? Is that what you, that what you found, that's what?
Historically, you've never seen this. Because we, we only look at the last month.
Right.
Until this closes and we close the, start the new year. We don't see this, we have historically seen this.
That's what's confusing.
Because, and you're right, it's confusing when you see it because it's so incomplete because they haven't closed last year to get this year right. Historically, we only see what we.
Right. And recall, we always, we always talk about we're operating in between. During these particular months.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I got it, I got it now, I understand.
So.
No, I was confused.
So, so the next part of it is to actually get the actual, the previous years, July first, twenty twenty-four through June, twenty twenty-five.
That closes out.
That particular one that she's referencing, you're referencing it, Ms. Carter, but we don't have access to it, but you have, you have.
Like you say, you have until when for the, the thirty-first of August?
August the twenty-second.
August twenty-second for the closer, okay.
Okay.
Got it. I'm good.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, the next is the expense and function report, that report that shows that we have not exceeded the spending by functions. Now, since we're in July, it's, you know, it, it pretty much just shows you where we are. Like the first line, we've, we, in total appropriations, it's saying that we, we're gonna, we budgeted two, sixteen million, two eighty-seven, one fifty-five, ninety-two. And the percentage that we've already, already spent is fifteen point two percent. And that, that makes sense because we just started the year and that line is teachers. So most of that is were teachers' salaries.
And we're referencing the expenditure journal summary.
Those people, one hundred percent already, what, they just, that's it for them for the year?
Good question.
That one hundred percent expended already?
One hundred percent expended already?
For them, for it?
Where are you, Ms. Hamilton?
I'm just looking.
Yeah, which, which?
Even if I'm on page one.
Yeah, yeah, that's why we're trying to see.
Those that a hundred percent, I say that's just it.
Around fifty-four hundred.
Yeah.
Those are line, school line budgets now, right? We're talking about the expenditure journals for schools.
Textbooks.
So they may have put a budget in there for twenty grand to buy stuff at the beginning of the year and they've already bought it.
Yeah.
So.
That's pretty much what it is.
Spend anymore, one-time purchases beginning of the year.
Got it. I'm good with that.
Okay, next report?
Okay, the next report is the open payables report. And normally, this report is nothing, we don't have open payables. But since we were at the end of the year trying to spend the funding that we needed to spend or whatever, we have a cutoff date to actually print checks. And sometimes we have a couple of things that don't make it during that time and they don't get in that first check run, I call it the first check run, by the end of the month. And this is what you see on this report. We only have two that come out of the general fund. The rest of them are nutrition, from nutrition. And they just didn't make, they just didn't make the check run before June the thirtieth. But since then, those checks that outstanding on here, they have been, been produced and cut already. And I have a copy of them that they have been, have been cut. Any questions about those checks?
You all right with that, Mr. Barnes?
No, it is what it is. I mean, it's, it's not good, so.
Christian?
We missed a check run. Somebody didn't get paid. Your produce man might cut you off. But doubt he will.
They got the check.
He ain't gonna like it.
They just didn't get it by, it's printed now.
It's printed now, she, the nutrition, the person that does nutrition's checks, she, they, they missed the deadline, but they printed the checks immediately, like the next week. So those checks have been printed and distributed, so those vendors have gotten those checks already.
So what they're doing, Ms. Carter, bring you the invoices, is that how that works?
No, the invoices go to accounts payable. The invoices go to accounts payable and once accounts payable enter those invoices into the system by vendor to get a check and then I, I cut the checks.
So you have to wait on them to input what needs to go into the system?
Uh-huh, yes, that's why we have a cutoff date. Makes, you know, if you want to get, get the check by the, we have a fifteen check run and the last of the month, like the thirtieth or the thirty-first. And we have a date to get something on the open payables report so that it'll get, it can get cut by the fifteenth or the thirtieth.
Hundred forty six thousand dollars didn't get paid when it should've got paid. I mean, the number just keeps growing.
And I, I'm just trying to understand, where's the breakdown?
Hmm.
Is it?
So, superintendent, the question is where's the breakdown? Is it accounts payable, where is it?
Payable?
Process?
Well, based on what is?
Who's not approving it on time, sitting on somebody's desk, is that the deal? I mean, I'm, I'm asking pertinent questions that I've seen historically happen about somebody not getting paid.
So, based on what was, was shared as Ms., Ms. Carter's mentioning, that um, from that one, that particular department, those checks did not get cut by the specific, provided by that deadline um, that's provided. And so, they did not make it into that particular run, so that was one specific department of not getting that particular information there.
So, is that department?
But that's not a, that's not a, that's not a typical thing um, from that particular department. Um, because in general, in the past, um, we've always met those particular deadlines.
Yes, like I said, um, normally, the open payables report, we don't have one because we don't generally have open payables at the end of the month.
Uh, I would agree with you.
It would be.
Hardly, but when you do, and it's a hundred and forty six thousand, one hundred and fifty eight dollars, we need to address the reason, the root cause and all of that.
Yes.
Yes.
I agree.
So, it's a matter of them not getting the invoices inputted to be paid so that you can run the checks.
Yes.
You can't run until they put it in.
I can't, I can't run, uh, run the check, do a check run and tell the information is in the system.
That's it. Somebody has approved these invoices, then once they're approved, they get put into the system.
Yes.
Then once they put in the system, you can run the check.
Then I run the checks.
Yes, ma'am.
So, somewhere between those.
A checks and balances, whoever orders, you can't approve the payment or whoever receives it, you got checks and balances all the way through the system.
Right.
So that you don't get, I'm buying it, I'm approving it, I'm writing a check, so there's checks and balances all the way through.
Do they let you know when they running behind?
Do they let me?
Do they let you know that when they're not on time with it?
Um.
Because you're the one have faced the music, you know what I'm saying?
They, whatever they have at the time of the, of the deadline, I receive that report. I have, I get an open payables report and uh, I run the checks by the system prints out, I check a vendor listing that, that uh, is on the open payables. And uh, the listing that I get, I have to go through and check off the ones that I see. The ones that are not there, those are the ones that won't be getting a check printed. And the ones that are not getting a check printed are the ones that didn't make the deadline. Mm-hmm.
Just saying, somebody needs to know because you, you're the only one that have to stand up here and account for it, but it sounds like it's not
Yeah.
necessarily your fault.
And it is, is, is vendor payments, it's never payroll, it, it's not payroll, it's, it's vendor payments. And I know they have to be paid also, but like I said, like with this particular time, which is rare, uh, they got paid immediately because she did a check run right, right after that check run. So, they was paid the next week immediately, so.
The next week?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
They just need to understand that the deadline is the deadline.
Yes.
So, you're not in the hot seat.
Okay.
But it is a root cause and whoever didn't approve the invoice or didn't, the invoice didn't make it from where it was.
Received by the time?
Through the process.
Couldn't approve the invoice.
No, ma'am, she just, she cuts the check.
She just cuts the check.
She cuts the check. So, it's a process, when the invoice comes in, the date is received, date is approved, checks and balances did we receive, yes, is the invoice correct, yes.
Right.
Then it goes to account AP who's that set up to pay. And then she writes the check.
Yes.
And, and you know, and I, and I, I guess I feel a little different about vendors because I've been one, I got a lot of them myself and um, it's, it's payroll. To that vendor, it's payroll.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So, it, it's an important deal.
Absolutely, yes. Yes, ma'am, you got to, sure.
Let's find out why.
We got you.
We didn't get all this stuff in.
Okay, thank y'all. Um, so the next report is the school nutrition report. Uh, they show a net worth of uh, one million, three hundred and thirty eight thousand, three oh four and sixty two cents as of June the thirtieth. And they're since June the thirtieth because uh, this report is always a month behind. So, this is uh.
Good deal.
Okay, all right. Any other questions?
Any more questions?
Okay, ma'am, thank y'all, thank you, Ms. Carter, I appreciate it.
Okay.
So, I guess we'll.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, hope everything is.
Did we ever find out about that sales on deal? I know they said Mr. Harper was supposed to.
Yeah, we got, you'll note, when, when we look at the superintendent's dashboard, you'll see it significantly lower. That was, yes, yes, ma'am. Okay, all right, so at this point, um, everyone, we move into our topics for discussion. Um, the very first item for our governance team is the um, use of the old high school, is there anything um, relative to um, any further um, comments or discussion relative to where we are with that? Of course, the last thing that we um, we just had the appraisals um, from the um, external assessors. And so, we haven't had, the last thing we hadn't made any um, further discussion on where we wanted to as a governance team to, to be able to move forward with that, I don't know what specifically that we want to.
There's two ways to look at my opinion, that one of it is in executive session under property.
Yes.
Um, and the other is programs might, we wanna use.
Sure.
Which is open session.
Right.
So, I'm, I've gotta comment an executive, but I don't have anything really in.
Public, okay, sure, okay. All right, yes, ma'am.
I think, I think we need, until we make up our mind what we wanna do with it, we can, I think we need to utilize some, some rooms, you know, do them but academy or something or something, you know, so we can be bringing in some income. Or rent some rooms out for offices, office space or something like that. Until we, until we make up our mind on which way we're gonna go with it.
Have we looked at Ms. Bivins's um, idea in the past, Mr. Knight, and as far as, I mean, and Ms. Bivins, you're absolutely right, if we, if we got some things we could generate revenue with. Um, I would tell you though, that part of generating the revenue is maintaining it. Um, so that would be a, it'd have to be a lease proposition. But uh, certainly, I don't know, we've talked about it in the past or no, or?
I think we submitted.
No, we haven't really had the discussion on the use of it in terms of renting it out. Um, we haven't went through that particular process, we just had several proposals of some various things that didn't go along those lines, but um.
You submitted some ideas.
Yes, ma'am, we submitted those ideas, um, as what potentially we could do with, with, with that particular space. But um, we haven't um, investigated whether or not we'll be able to utilize some of the current space um, in whatever section of the building for the purpose of whatever the governance team decides that we wanna be able to do with it. Um, with any external entity to be able to utilize some of that space um, at a cost, we have not.
And Ms. Bivins, I tell you, it would be, uh, it's a great idea. I tell you, it's gonna be, we'd have to do a lot of research on it to see what portions we could isolate. Because I don't, that whole technical building up, but it's probably on one unit, one breaker. So, how would you get your electricity to one office?
There's a lot of debris in it.
And it's, I mean, it's just a matter of cleaning up all that. It's a great idea, we just need to look at it, I mean, it's certainly.
Yeah, and if there's a, and if there's an idea as a, as a specific portion of it that we need to take a look at, you all let us know. Um, so then we can say, okay, well, we're gonna look at this particular portion and try to make a determination of how we would be able to um, move forward with trying to utilize that space um, to have a come up with a plan of action if, if there is a specific portion of it that you, that you mentioning.
We could, we would need Mr. Harper.
Yeah.
To tell the school system or the board what could be broken apart from a standpoint of where, where's the electricity come in? Can we break this building off and see it as a separate entity from, you know, the, this portion? Is there smaller portions where we could identify perhaps a need um, utilization for the community or whatever so that we wouldn't have to turn on the whole school?
Right, so if, if.
Whole school be air, air conditioned or heated?
Right.
Is there a way to maybe um, utilize one portion of it, one hall up on the hill by the tennis court, whatever? But that's just something we're gonna need some insight from.
Yeah, so is, but do we already have an idea of there's a, if there's a specific portion that we may be considering that'll help us to have a starting point um, to be able to, to drink that?
I would not think the older part.
Talk about that retreat, the next retreat and so.
Yes, ma'am, okay, so you wanna take a look at that then?
Yes.
Okay, sure.
Any credence that, you got vagrants there?
The, no credence to what, to my understanding.
Okay, I, I was talking to some um.
When I had a conversation with Mr. Harper.
Okay.
That was.
No, I'm talking about alumni that were touring the building.
Yeah, that was, yeah. Yeah, that was. When I, when I, when I had a conversation with him, there was no credence to that particular portion. Uh, what was actually um, witnessed, I'm not sure.
Fan up in there, fan up in there.
They live in there.
Yeah, I didn't.
And then it was funny because I asked him, I said, who did y'all talk to, who took y'all? I can send you a picture.
So, y'all got it? Yeah, because he was, but yeah, that's what I'm.
I, I mean, but that's, Ms. Bivins's recommendation needs to be addressed at a retreat perhaps?
Retreat, sure.
For, for usage.
Okay.
Let's certainly look at it.
Okay. All right. Okay, any other questions on that, on that piece? So, the next area for us is the ESPLAS discussion. Um, and so, um, based on the last time we had our board retreat, we had some, um, very good, healthy discussion um, around um, the um, ESPLAS. And so, um, I took the information that we discussed um, at the board retreat, shared that information with um, our attorney, Corey Kirby. Um, he has hence um, had reached out to um, entity that um, did our previous board referendum um, inside of your, it should be inside of your package. Um, it's a draft document um, that has been worked on thus far as it relates to um, a board um, referendum. Um, and this document um, came to us very late today, um, right before our session. Um, it had gone through to um, the wrong email. Um, and so, the, to finalize this document, we would have to come back, you guys haven't had a chance to take a look, look through this. Um, and so, um, with that, um, if you, as once you take a look at it, um, overnight, we'll come back and have some conversation about where, where we are with the process of being able to vote on, on by Thursday um, in terms of the process. But this is the um, document that was shared with me thus far um, from um, our attorney um, relative to the attorneys that um, drafted the previous um, document for us. And so, I'm just sharing that with us, governance team at this particular point.
Oh, just a quick question, just, we're looking at forty five million, but we're not going to exceed fifty. And you're looking, looking at the years, uh, I guess the payments for the principal. I guess they stretched them out a little bit longer because they're considered less of what we paying right now, if I'm not mistaken. So, we paying what, about five million dollars a year now, Mr. Born? I think we paying about, looking at the green sheet, I think we paying about five million dollars a year. I think right now, these are like three point one and we continue to average to four hundred and seventy two thousand bringing in now. With this one, we should, we, we'd be way okay.
Well, Mr., I'm, yeah, I, I just got it, I mean, I'm.
Oh, yeah, y'all gotta take it, y'all gotta get a chance to take a look at it.
I hadn't even opened it up, that's, I'm sorry.
Well, they'll communicate that to me once, once I, better tell them tomorrow where we are um, as to what our sequence is.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta vote by Thursday.
Yeah, and so, but.
We have a deadline.
Yeah, we gotta vote by Thursday.
Yes, we got you.
We gotta vote by Thursday. The baby having on ballot, we got, we have to vote.
Right, and so, there, he was in contact with all entities, even the parties that drafted up what we have, so. Just wanted to share that with you.
Our attorney drafted it.
Yeah, the one that drafted the previous one. He, our attorney.
Our attorney.
Our attorney um, utilized the same individual that drafted the previous one to draft this.
The one that, Mr. Born, he did.
Yes, this is the person, this is the one that's, that's drafted that document. And they're working with the specific entity in our process to get us exactly what we need to.
Only I would get numbers, the numbers are considered less of what we paying now. So, we can actually make sure that something bump, because for topics, some other people, they tried to get a certain amount. And the way the interest rates are now, they, they, they would, it was like seven, eight million dollars less than what they could've got almost six, seven months ago. So, it continues to go on, the way the bond market is now, it continues to, that, that.
Yes.
That is, it will continue to go down.
What we paying now, Mr. Knight, you got the issue?
In terms of um, the actual payments, I think the initial back in two thousand nineteen, we were roughly four million, four million sixty eight. And down now, with the final payment, it would be down to three point four million.
I remember that green sheet, we paying close to five million dollars a year now, but with these, it's close to about one, three point one, three point two. They get a little bit larger for the end, but we should be, if we continue at four hundred and seven, what we averaging now, we'll be fine.
Did I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanna make sure with everything going on with the economy and holding money back, I just want you all to make sure that if we do this, that we're not gonna go in the negative.
But we not paying it now, we don't pay it.
Well, we gonna have to pay it sooner or later, we gonna have to pay this.
The sale tax, we don't, the school system don't pay it.
If we don't collect the sales tax, we.
Yeah, the sale tax, but I don't, that's not gonna happen.
But I just wanna make sure with everything like that school program, money going.
Yes, ma'am.
Some school money going, I just, what going on, I, the economy, what's going on now? We got to make sure we making the right decision so we won't go in the hole.
So, so what your concern, Ms. Bivins, is, is looking at with the current financial landscape of what's happening. Want to ensure if we take this route um, of doing the SPLAS, that if, we don't run into a situation down the line where the taxes, the, the, the actual SPLAS collection doesn't match what's needed and then we have to pay the, the additional amount?
Right, I wanna make sure we safe to do what we, I don't mind doing it, don't, don't get my, I just wanna make sure that we making the right choice because of what the economy, that's what going on now.
Mr. Born, when, when the old boy did it, you went through two major economic things, you went through the housing market, uh, downturn, you went through COVID. Our SPLAS, you go back ten years from now, our SPLAS had changed. The average income for, it, it dropped out one time, but the average have, some kind of have never, ever defaulted on a SPLAS.
But I guess what I'm looking at, Vincent, is that people not spending as much as they used to spend, you know, to collect taxes, the way we used to collect taxes.
Everybody that comes through some kind of pays into the SPLAS, everybody. It's not just some kind, it's, it's not a, it's not a property tax.
But like I said, I don't mind, I just wanna make sure y'all, make sure we making the right decision.
I understand what you're saying.
I'm, I'm on board, but I wanna make sure we making the right decision.
Um, I'm, I'm gonna kindly disagree with you on one thing.
Yes, sir.
We were collecting less than three hundred thousand when I got on the board ten years ago.
Yeah.
We're at two eighty, two ninety.
Right.
You mentioned two great things that happened in our lifetime that we, we've been blessed to see and get through and that's.
That's right.
Um, one of them was that COVID thing and the housing market blew up. Um, some great things have happened. Um, some great things have happened besides that as well. But when we originally entered into the ten year, ten years ago, we set it at a, where we we set budgets, we sold bonds, we set budgets, and we thought if we set a conditional three hundred thousand for the bond. Now, this, I see principal, I gotta go back, I see principal amount, I don't see interest. So I I gotta, you gotta do interest calculation.
Yeah.
But, you know, I agree. I don't wanna get over my head here. Um, I'd just like to know what the collections are associated with these numbers in thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine. Um, that's if that's principal, then, you know, that's that's right at the number, that's no interest. Um, so you you got to make sure we got interest in there. Collections, you're absolutely right, Mr. Kears, have been five million for the last two years period. Um, they were four something in twenty-two, five last year, five the year before. We're on pace to be well above five again. Um, the thing that I would, I would, that I kept reminding myself when we were talking about this in between. And I said, hey, we need to do ten, let's make it ten and do what we looked at was. Um, let's make sure, because even if we collect it and don't have to pay it in a interest or a or a principal note, we still have it. But I know, but it goes in that other, it goes in our fund that we still have to spend. And I'm like, Ms. Bivins, I really wanna make sure when we do this analysis on these numbers that I'd rather have some falling in the bucket that I got under my trough for me to use than me having to dig out of my other purse to go in that trough.
Only thing I'm saying is, i- if we don't, if we, I I totally understand what Bivins is saying, I totally understand that. And I'm glad she's on board with it, but if we don't, if we don't do it now, it's not gonna happen. Because.
I'm on it.
What I'm saying, inflation will continue to go up. And we don't, just because we get, even if we not, only thing we're doing is letting the voters approve. If it's approved, and we say, okay, well, let's scale back and say, we don't, we don't, we not gonna do this right now. We don't have to spend the money, but we need to get what we think we gonna need. And if we, if we don't have, if we don't spend the money, we can always just tell them to give it back and don't necessarily spend it. But we need to go ahead and move forward with it. So we can go ahead and give them the children what they need. Like I said, we can always curtail what we wanna do on down the road, we don't have to do everything at one time. But we need to go ahead and get it because if we don't do it now, we won't be able to do anything.
And and to me, this allows us to pay for things that we don't have to pay for out of our school money. Like what transportation said he needed. But he said, can we take it out of ESPLAS? Okay, we ain't got, come out of our budget, we got the money that we collecting from.
I'm all, Mr. Kears, I, we we have to do it, we have to do it. We have to do it.
Yes.
For our stakeholders, we gotta get this passed, we gotta get them educated, they need to vote yes.
Yes.
I'm all for that. What I want, and I'm, and I'm, I'm good to go, we gotta get it, we gotta get it done, we gotta get the bonds sold. Um, so we then know how much money we could possibly have. I don't, we've got all this money, we still got to spend in this one.
But we need to get a final, final.
We we need to get this one, this one, because it's gotta go to the voters, then we gotta get the bonds sold and all that. But then we need, if we do all that, we don't need to use it up or use it until we need it, because then we're gonna lose it.
Yes, sir.
In interest.
Well, we can, all that's going on in the play, but I, if if you go back and look, everybody here, look at numbers, if you go back, some kind of have not ever defaulted, never had a proper payment SPLUS.
Most of them have, never. Never.
That has never ever happened, never.
And we've never not, since we started doing a SPLUS, we've never skipped a year.
No, ma'am, I mean, it's because it's a wonderful thing, it's an ESPLUS, it's exactly what you need.
People all know what I'm saying, I mean, I do it in my house. But right now, if if something kind of have, if something had happened, when I look at it and you see the two downturn that happened in the past ten, fifteen years, and some kind of still escaped it through it, I understand what Mr. Born just said, if you look at that green sheet or look at the if you go back to ten years, yeah, it did drop down to three hundred thousand. But we haven't had a problem, man, because everybody that comes through some kind of paid into the sales tax. And I was listening to the, to the uh city, city uh meeting last month. If that's, I'm just putting this out there, if they put those fifty, sixty houses out there, out there in front of the middle school, if the city allowed them to do that, that's gonna be rolled into this. I mean, that's, right now, it's time to go ahead and do it, because I don't, I think after the next couple of years, I think some kind of go forward. If all that, those houses build over there, all that money, all those workers, all of we spending money right in some kind. If everything start happening in some kind, it's gonna be, we gonna be great.
I'm, I'm not saying not to do it, I wanna make sure we doing the right thing.
I understand.
We, if we see, we need to look at the figures, and we see that it might be a problem.
I understand, I understand. This is not people being to get it, they have, I guess, Raymond James, whoever.
Sure, by Thursday.
And no payments, so we try to get it to before Thursday.
At the, at the retreat, we talked about things we want to do, and we couldn't do everything, so we had to prioritize what things that need to get done for our facilities.
It's something, because it's something out there that we need to do, we totally understand. But we need to go ahead and get it done, but if you get those numbers.
Get the numbers to everybody, so we have them before Thursday to vote on.
Yeah.
If that's the route that the governance team wanna go.
Uh, but I need to see the Raymond James, Raymond James is a great company, they've done great for us. But they're a sales company, and they get paid on commission, so they're gonna give you the best number they can get to get the most money they can get. Sometimes you have to back them off a little bit because they're great salesmen. Um, and they get paid on commission.
Right.
So the more they can get you to buy and sell, the more they can.
We down to the wire.
We need to take a vote, and we're gonna take a vote, and I'm positive it's gonna be unanimous, or it's gonna be a a big majority. Um, because I'm all for SPLUS, but I'm, I'm.
I understand.
I'm just want it to be correct, so that at some point.
I have to cross that team.
Yes, sir. Because if one thing hadn't happened, we'd still be struggling. If they hadn't made that little law that says if you buy it off Amazon. You pay taxes on it.
Yeah.
That happened three years into this. And that increased it one hundred thousand dollars in collection a month. When they passed that law that says if you order it off the internet, you pay the taxes where it lands.
Twenty-five, probably mine.
It did real good. It did real, because a lot of, we lost a lot of tax base. Well, we lost a lot of this because some companies moved, they were selling products out of our county that weren't producing those products anymore, generating a sales tax.
I think the future is bright for some kind.
I do too. Let's make sure we get it right.
Okay, so we're good, you guys?
All that before?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, we tried to get everything to us, so we have.
Before Thursday at five o'clock?
Yeah, as soon as they get, get it to me.
Right, try and do it.
Okay, so next on our agenda is the, we, potential board retreat, y'all know we got quite a bit of things that we trying to get done as a governance team. Um, we got some things we were looking at relative to policy, we got some decisions to make relative to um like the, what we're discussing this evening. Um, so is there a potential board retreat or not coming up? Well, it's up to you all, um, we have the eighteenth, which is Monday, or the twenty-fifth?
What month you talking about?
August. Twenty-fifth, we have the fifteenth of September. We have the twenty-ninth.
Twenty-fifth. What about twenty-fifth? Week after next.
It's up to, it's up to you guys.
Whatever date y'all choose, I make myself available, I don't wanna put no dates, I have, I have to take off, but what we do anyway.
What's the dates?
Um, well, I guess, again, Monday coming up is out, the eighteenth, so we moved to the twenty-fifth, so the twenty-fifth is potential date. Um, and then, of course, we have the Labor Day holiday on the first, so that's, that's, that included. We have our work session on the eighth, so um the other day potentially, now, we have our district leadership retreat on the twenty-second, so that wouldn't make us available. So we have the fifteenth of September and the twenty-ninth of September. For additional dates for any of our governance team work. So we have the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth of August?
Of August, the um, just on a Monday. And the twenty, the fifteenth of September and the twenty-ninth of September.
I may have missed this night, what are we discussing?
Well, whatever our governance teamwork, we have some policy things that we were wanting to discuss, we have some more additional um decisions on. Um, I E. what we wanted to do with the um property, just a variety of different things that we um, of course, some things relative to our governance team, we had to establish our um uh balance scorecard, it's just a few things that.
Mr. Lane, I'm good with whatever, the twenty-fifth is fine with me, but then I I may get a, I may find out on Friday, I gotta be in California on Monday, I, I just, if I'm available, I'll be here, how about that?
So we wanna shoot for the twenty-fifth, okay?
If anything come about, we may have this changed.
Okay, but at least we have it on the calendar.
Yes.
Okay, all righty, okay, um, so now we move into um curriculum.
I thought we did curriculum already.
Well, they did, we did update, we didn't do the, we did our updates. Ms. Thomas?
I'm back.
Hey.
Yes, how are you?
Hey. All, all the items up here are renewals, um Renaissance learning software and teacher toolbox, hundred and twenty-three thousand, hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and two dollars, ninety cent out of Title One. Also, the renewal for the Renaissance learning data integration, which is three thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars, that's out of Title Five. And then Renaissance learning, professional learning, um eighteen thousand dollars, that's out of Title Two.
And all this federal, federal.
All those are federal funds.
And what programs come out of Renaissance?
Ma'am.
What programs fall under Renaissance?
Um, Myon, Freckle, uh, our universal screening, star reading, star math, star early literacy, um, yeah.
Is star our universal screening.
Yes, ma'am.
That the state requires?
Yes.
So are we good, you guys, with this, can we put these on the consent agenda?
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, um, the financial matters, we went over several reports. Um, are there any reports that we had that, um, I know we made a note on a couple of them that we wanted to get some additional information on, um, I know, know we didn't have the three ninety-six um fund, we had, we didn't have the three ninety-six.
Close out.
Close out, close, close out, so we haven't, we can't vote on that one, but all the rest of them, we can um approve to put those on the consent agenda, and we'll bring the other document to make sure that the governance team has an opportunity to take a look at it prior to voting approval.
Yes.
We probably get that one next month.
Well, we should have, no, we.
Out the twenty-second.
You won't have that, you may have it next month. You may have last year's next month.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, we'll just have a general, she already has a general document with that, but it's not final because the numbers are not final. But at least we have something to take a look at.
Right.
Okay, so um, policy matters.
Policy alert to action um taken during the July, during July twenty twenty-five is as follows. GSB, GSBA continues to monitor lawsuits that are pending across our nation that challenge various executive orders issued by President Trump during his second term. These lawsuits are in various courts and could have potential policy implications depending on the outcome. It's still too early um in policy change, to make policy changes based on these lawsuits. Um, State Board rules that uh State Board Education met on July sixteenth, there are no policy implication from that meeting as of right now.
All right, next item, we have um um board policy IFBG.
The Internet Acceptable Use Policy has been updated to align with the requirements of Senate Bill three fifty-one and House Bill three forty. You should have a copy of the updates in red, and so um, Senate Bill three fifty-one requires public schools to provide annual instruction on responsible digital behavior, cyberbullying prevention, and internet safety. District adoption is October first, um submission to Georgia Department of Education October fifteen. Um, House Bill three forty requires all public K through eighth grades and districts, I mean, the district to adopt and enforce policies limiting personal electronic devices such as cell phones, tablets, smartwatches, et cetera, um during school hours and school sponsored events. Uh, policy development deadline, January one, twenty twenty-six, and enforcement should begin July one, twenty twenty-six.
So with this particular policy, you all, it all depends on um how um much you want to review this, um, we certainly, if you, you're not um, you do not want to approve it or vote on it on this particular cycle. Um, we certainly um could put it, because you know, the typical timeframe for us is thirty days. And so we still have that particular option, if the board is not ready to approve it and needs additional time to go back through and review it and take a look at um what's in the policy, um, that allows us that flexibility, um, if if so, we want to do so.
But I feel three forty is tonight, K through eight, they can't have it, I, I mean, uh, do we already have the pouches and stuff? If we vote on this for them to make the stories, how, how, how would they, how would they store these, they, their electronic devices?
Some schools already have the pouches, but note that um for us in terms of enforcement, it's up to us because we have up until next year to actually fully implement.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but we just have to approve a policy prior to our deadline.
We won't enforce it to next, next.
Right, yes.
We just saw an opportunity to go ahead and edit the policy, the board policy, one time because of the quick turnaround for House Bill three forty.
Is, is there anything um in this policy with the additions that would require us to go ahead and and vote on it that we need to do?
So basically, right, the language is pretty much just in line with the Senate, um, the bills. Um, honestly, the policy, it, it, we kinda already adhere to a lot of this. Sure that that language is there. Um, any of the consequences are just the same consequences that we've always um stated. And if you read through, you'll find that it'll say refer to that, you know, consequences are according to the policy. So we didn't change any of the consequences, it was just including the language um in the policy.
I was gonna say, if there's no rush for it, we can just go through the normal procedures.
Yes, there's no rush.
That on the table for thirty days.
Yeah, there's no.
Right, it's just, like I said, the deadline, October one.
October one is the deadline for us to approve it.
Right.
We get it on the table and give it its thirty-day rest and and do all that in the normal procedure, nothing has to be waived.
Right, we just wanted to go ahead and put it in front.
Wanted to go ahead and move forward, so we don't wanna wait till September and then bring it to the board in September, knowing that we had an October um deadline.
And put it on the table for thirty days.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll come back in our September meeting.
Doctor Ingram, this type policy.
Because it had to be before October.
To have it reviewed by counsel, or is this coming from GSBA or is this?
Yes, it's coming from GSBA, um, they were both listed um in their recent policy updates.
I read where they were doing that, so this is the GSBA version of, hey, this will get you
Right.
what you need.
Yep, and it's been the conversation throughout the districts in Georgia, you know, our um listserv conversations, everybody's working on them, trying to get them in.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all, thank you. All right, so we were.
Are we gonna put it, are we gonna?
We need to put it on.
Do we go ahead and, we wanna vote on it Thursday?
We wanna vote on it, put it on the table for thirty days.
There's gotta be table.
Table for thirty days.
Put on the table for thirty days and vote on it in September.
Right.
Yes. Yeah, okay.
Go ahead, if it's GSBA, this is what we're gonna do, this is where we're gonna go, and it doesn't change anything. Let's, let's get it out there and get it done.
All right, okay, all right, next for us, um, we have property, which those we've already agreed upon, put those on the consent agenda. Um, now, technology, Dr. Ingram, welcome back.
Yes, I was hoping, I should have stayed. Um, so um, we're requesting approval um for two renewal. Um, one is GoGuardian, and you know, it's our content filtering um to ensure safety um access to the internet for both students and staff. Um, and then YAS, which is our cloud-based. Um, and then YAS, which is our cloud-based platform, um, that centralizes our core functions for hemer resources, finances. Uh, go back, um, Go Guardian, where, um, the cost, the renewal cost is forty-one thousand, four hundred dollars to be paid with Title V funds, and YAS is seventy-two thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars to be paid with local funds.
Budget.
Sir?
Again?
It's in the budget.
Yes. Yeah, these are both renewal programs that we've had previously.
Yes.
And YAS covers, what is that thing?
YAS, YAS Core, like, is for pers, keeping up with, um, personal learning. It keeps up, I mean, we even have the option to purchasing.
Is our core infrastructural program. Um, looking at, um, for us, um, all of our leave, um, our W twos and financial, it's, it's our core program that houses all of that information.
Yes.
So it's payroll, all of those particular pieces there. Yes. HR and some finance.
And finance.
As well as some PLs, which allow us to be able to look at where our PL is during that process, that platform.
Approval for PL, purchase orders, all that, we can utilize it for.
Okay. All right, so we're good with these on the consent agenda, everyone? Okay. All right, so at our board meeting, um, coming up for us, um, make sure I got this. Board meeting on Thursday, the tentative agenda thus far that we have is call to order. Um, superintendent's, um, report, uh, with that included dashboard report and, uh, various recognitions for us across the system. Um, then we have opportunity for public comment, adoption of the agenda, adoption of the consent agenda, um, which includes the minutes from our July tenth meeting as well as our call meeting on July twenty-first. Um, and that is with attachment A, uh, fundraisers, school use requests, and overnight field trips. That's included in, um, attachment B. We don't have any old business. We have several, um, and items under new business. One in particular, y'all know that one of the things that we as a system, um, have to do is, um, with our, uh, CTAE, state and federal grants, that allotments that they provide to us, the board has to approve accepting those particular allotments. Um, and so, um, you should have, um, those particular documents, and so we want to be able to accept those items. Also, um, we're asking for the approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, Southern County School Nutrition Handbook. Um, and then we also have, um, included on here, um, once we get all of the final information relative to the, um, SPOSS referendum, um, as well as the, um, district strategic plan updates, which you receive the plan on tomorrow, um, with the necessary, um, formatting, um, corrections. And so, um, it'll, of course, you know, we have our current strategic plan. We made a few adjustments, um, to the strategic plan, um, relative to some things that, that we included in our presentation this evening. Some things we wanted to, to move forward with this upcoming year. So of course, one of the things that the board has annually to review the strategic plan and to approve it again for the, um, subsequent years coming up. So we wanted to share that as well for that particular approval. And these are the items from, um, our new business. And then, of course, after that, we have our announcements, um, that we have across our system. Um, the announcements are as follows. Labor Day holiday is on Monday, September the first. Um, our early release parent-teacher conference, which is the first one of the year, is on Friday, September the fifth. Um, our work session is scheduled for Monday, September the eighth at six P M. Progress reports will go out in four and a half weeks for us on September the eighth, well, actually, um, on Wednesday, September the tenth. And then our regular board meeting will be Thursday, September the eleventh at seven. And of course, this year, um, our Japanese with our Konu, Mayoshia City Sister delegation, they will come back to us, um, in October this year, and it'll be October the twenty-first through October the twenty-fifth. And so those are the announcements.
Mr. Knight?
Yes, ma'am.
Back on the, um, what are we gonna be getting on the district strategic plan update? What will be?
It'll be the entire district strategic plan. So you'll, we'll have the plan. You're gonna get it tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you get it tomorrow. We just had, um, one or two items that we had to make an adjustment on. We didn't want to send, get that out to you without those two adjustments. So you'll get that tomorrow. Okay. All righty. And moving back to, um, our agenda, we have opportunity for executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. If there is no further discussion, the chair will entertain a motion for executive session for the following said reasons. To discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee, or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent. To discuss a vote, or vote to authorize negotiations to purchase, purchase, dispose of, or lease property, authorize ordering an appraisal related to the acquisition or disposal of real estate, enter into a contract to purchase, dispose of, or lease property subject to approval and a, and a subsequent public vote, or enter into an option to purchase, dispose of, or lease real estate subject to approval and a subsequent public vote. To consult and meet with legal counsel pertaining to pending or potential litigation, settlement claims, administration proceedings, or other judicial acts brought to or brought by against the school district or an officer or employee in which officer or employee may be directly involved.
So prior to going into executive session, could we, under new business, um, approve the first three items that go under consent agenda? Um, the handbook, um, approving the grants, and the, um, new, yes, the first two items. The approving the grants and the handbook, of course, the SPOSS and the, um, district strategic plan, they will be forthcoming. Um, so we don't want to put those on the consent agenda, but could we put the two other items under new business on the consent agenda?
With the nutrition handbook?
Yeah, the nutrition handbook.
Okay.
And the, the approval of to accept the grants, our CTAE grants. Those two items.
Well, we're certainly gonna approve the acceptance of a month. Have we discussed the nutrition handbook?
No, I don't, I don't know. I didn't know if you guys got a chance to read that. If not.
I mean, it's a, I mean, I didn't, I mean, I've looked at it over the years, but did, we hadn't changed anything, have we?
We hadn't. Just some, just a minor, that's why I want to ask, is, are y'all good with the consent agenda? Or do y'all need to review it and it, it's on our agenda for Thursday?
I, I don't need to review it.
I, I looked at, I, I went through it, but it. Such specific stuff to have it here, how it operates.
Yes, it is.
I'm good with it. I'm going on the consent agenda.
Okay, okay. All right.
Second.
The motion has been motioned by Mr. Kirsh and seconded by Mr. Barnes. Is everybody ready for the question and the discussion? All in favor, signify by show of hands. All opposed? Hands have it. We will go into executive session at nine twenty-nine P M.
It has been motion by Mr. Barnes and second by Mr. Curious that we go back in open session. All in favor, signify by your hands. All opposed, we will not enter back into open session at 10:47 PM. Right this time, Mr. Knight, we have some consent agenda items that you want to put?
Um, the job description for the 21st century is that...
Okay, alrighty.
Anything relative to the personnel agenda itself?
Um, I'm going to request that the job description for the, um...
He didn't bring it up myself.
Brought it up, yeah.
Oh, AICFAC?
AICFAC be voted on separate.
Okay.
Yeah, now that was additional that we were going to bring the other information forward on that.
Oh, okay.
Those were the items for the consent agenda.
Okay, good. Any other discussion?
I motion we go home, adjourn.
Say.
The motion and second, motion by Mr. Curious, and second by Mr. Barnes, that we adjourn. All in favor, signify by your hands.
Thank you.
All opposed, meeting adjourned at 10:48.